In accordance with Governor Baker's Declaration of June 16th, 2021, granting certain pandemic-related authorizations related to public board and town meetings, and recently extended until March 23rd, 2023. This meeting will be conducted both in person and virtually via Google Meets. To join via Google Meets, it is meets.google.com backslash NRG dash EENF dot BND. The meeting may be recorded by SMAC cable television and broadcast live and may be livestream at www.stoughtonTV.org. A recording of the meeting transcript or other comprehensive record of the proceeding will be posted on the town's website and/or SMAC as soon as possible after the meeting if live broadcast or live streaming is unsuccessful. Times or approximate and items may be taken out of order at the chair's discretion. With that said, I'm going to use my privilege as chair to take an item out of order. And that item is item number eight. Enter into an agreement for a study on the feasibility of moving part or all of the Town of Stoughton Emergency 911 Dispatch Call to Regional Dispatch Facility. Votes may be taken. I'm taking this out of order based on new information that I've received recently. In order to do our due diligence, we have to review the information prior to proceeding. The information that I recently received just the other day and also shared with my fellow board members is a report from the Chief of Police. It is 84 pages long. I asked for it to be placed in a binder, and I have not had an opportunity to review it. And I doubt if my fellow select board members have had the opportunity to review it as well. Additionally, one of the options that was on the table was an assessment or study that would be no charge to the town, and that was from UMass Boston, the Collins Center. We received the project timeline just last night, and I haven't had a chance to really see how that fits into the document that we received from the chief or the timeline of where we could have interviews because, of course, they would be interviewing us, the Select Board. They would be, more importantly, interviewing the chiefs of fire, safety, and fire and police. So we need to coordinate schedules with them to see if that's even doable right now. So I respectfully ask my fellow board members if they will entertain a motion to table this item until time that is prohibitive, time that is allow us to do our due diligence with the information that we received at hand.
Madam Chair, I move that we postpone for the deliberation on item eight, enter an agreement for the study of feasibility of moving part of or all of the Town of Stoughton's Emergency 911 Dispatch Call to the Regional Dispatch Facility. Move that until our next scheduled meeting, which would be two weeks from now. Hopefully, that will give us all the time to read the materials that we have.
Yes, a question? Or can I get a second?
I'll second it, Joe. Go ahead.
Okay, and then that allows us to discuss.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I didn't know if the Select Board Vice Chair would entertain, you know, not...I think we need more time. I received this report from the police chief last Wednesday, and I have spent probably four hours reading and got about halfway through it and have more questions than I did when this was first introduced. And I don't think that a feasibility study, whether we pay for it or somebody else, is prudent until we find out what's going in our own backyard. I want to have the opportunity to read this. I want to have the opportunity to hear from the police chief and the fire chief, and only then we can decide if we need to look at a different location. I believe that this is the time that we sometimes get in our own way in this town, and we have two professionals with assistants to them that should be able to tell us what we need to know. As a policy board, if we're not happy with that information, you know, this is something that then they would know fully opposition. But I don't think even a couple of weeks is going to do this. I mean, to do it the right way, and they have schedules, we have schedules, we have jobs, you know, that we have to do on top of that. So I just don't think this is...getting feedback there? Did it die? Nope.
Can everybody hear me still? No, I just think that if we're going to do this, we need as much time as it's going to take to review this information. The questions that I had before I started this process have multiplied since I've made a brief half of the police chief's report.
Turn on the mic now. Can they fix the feedback?
Okay, sounds like you should be good now.
How about now? There we go. So again, I believe this is going to take more than just to the next scheduled meeting. And I don't think that it's something right now that needs to be rushed. If it's going to be done the right way, it's got to be comprehensive. Everybody involved with the process needs to be heard so that we, as the policymaking board, understand fully, you know, the ramifications of a movement, all potential costs. We've been hearing some things, but I don't know. I'm taking people's...I'm just listening to words at this point. And these are the people that we paid to do the job, that know it more than we do, and I believe we owe them the opportunity to...this information is to go through it and then respond accordingly. Because again, I haven't made it halfway through it, right about that, and I've got about three pages of notes, you know, of questions that I want answered. And until I get the answers to those questions, a feasibility study doesn't mean anything right now.
Mr. McCrisky, with respect to your statements, I would like to amend my motion to leave the timing of it being readdressed to the discretion of the chair.
Okay. Thank you.
Are you okay with that?
That's just my thoughts.
All in favor on the motion?
Before we do, I just actually would like to...I'm sorry. I apologize. Just add a couple more things. And I think this is, even though this is not a public hearing, it's between us as a board to deliberate on, talk about. I would like to just make a couple of things clear, at least from my own perspective. And these have been things I've articulated, I think, to all of you separately as I've gone along the way. I do have, as we go through this process, some priorities. And just to make it clear, especially to the public at this point, because I've heard that money is the purpose or reason for all this, and I couldn't find that to be farther from the truth. The first, my primary concern is to provide equal or better service to the public, to ensure the personal safety of our public safety employees, and also to respect the employment of our public safety personnel, including dispatchers. Those are priorities that, as I've gone through and discussed this with people, have made clear that those are the things that I'm really measuring this against. And in fact, have been very verbal about the fact that if an outcome that benefits the public actually costs more, that I would be happy to go to battle for that, if I felt like that was what was best for the town. Just as, you know, in a moment of personal privilege here, I have mentioned, it's no secret that I have family here, I have a little kid. I have called 911 for him on more than one occasion, and sometimes that's resulted in prolonged hospitalizations, at least one case. The scariest moment I think I ever had was actually simply croup, thankfully, but that was absolutely terrifying. And I feel like every time I've called 911, the dispatchers have done a professional job, the police or ambulances...thankfully, I've never had to call a fire engine, but the ambulances are there before I've even hung up the phone. I feel like they're there two minutes before I've even called. It's so fast. The work that they do, I'm personally thankful for. And there's no circumstance under which I would sacrifice anybody's safety in this town for money that has never, has never been on the table. And I feel like that is probably something that, without having asked, every member on this board, I have faith, that's true of you all as well. However, there are, without having to go into details, there are issues that we do have to address as a board with regard to our dispatch. And those questions were legitimate, and I'm more than comfortable taking the time to understand the problems, look at solutions, and do our best, use our best judgment to come up with a solution that is in the best interest of the town, following these priorities: equal or better service for the public, ensuring the personal safety of our public safety personnel, and also respecting the employment of our public safety personnel, including the dispatchers. So I thank you for the moment to discuss, to bring those things up.
Thank you, Vice Chair Cavie. Mr. Carrara, you wanted to comment?
Yes, Madam Chairman, I just have a comment to the audience. I want to thank everybody that has come here tonight and that, for your patience and your understanding to what we're doing. This is not a non-action. It's some of us, I just received this packet tonight, so I thank them for giving us the time. I'm sorry that you all came out and that there was going to...you expected something to go on, but something will. And I'm sure the chairman will notify both chiefs so that I hope everybody will come back and, you know, take part. So again, thank you all for coming. It was well appreciated.
And I would also like to add, and this is from the heart, that I have the best interests of the people of Stoughton in mind at all times. When the agenda was written, we didn't have this information. We just received it. And I believe that this is important information for us to go through to perform our due diligence. But we have the citizens in mind at all times. It's not financial. That's not the priority. It's the safety. It's the safety of all of you. On the vote.
Aye.
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 And I vote yes as well. Thank you very much. Let's move to the next item, and that is citizens' comments. Yes, please step forward.
Why don't we take a couple of minutes for people to clear the room?
We're going to take a few minutes so people can exit comfortably. In the meantime, please step forward, and I'll give you the high sign when to start. Yes, because you're next. Oh, please state your name and precinct. Oh, can you turn your mic on, please?
My name is Joe Quinsoas, and I'm in Precinct 2. I'm also a town meeting member.
Yes.
Madam Select Woman, I'm talking about the topic of Stoughton 9/11 Services, a regional facility.
Excuse me, Mr. Soares?
S-O-A-R-E-S.
Thank...Mr. Sorry. So that is not the purpose of citizens' comments because that item was tabled into a future time.
I'm sorry, sir, I can't speak towards that at all.
No, sir.
Forgive me for taking your time.
Sir, that's disrespectful to us.
Like I said, the same shit you did. It's bull****. The people in this town deserve the respect, okay?
You are out of order!
Oh, who cares? Take the hammer.
Hey, I have police officers here that can take care of this. Yes.
We all signed up for the election.
Yes, please step forward and state your name and precinct.
Peter Murphy, Precinct 2, Town Meeting Rep. One of the things I want to bring to the board's attention is you're in charge of the roads of this town. And what happens is, my concern is Maple Street runs from Turnpike Street to Page Street. What happened was years ago, Amazon came in through a special town meeting. We couldn't ask questions. There was no mitigation that we know of and all that. They came in. It was very disruptive at first with all their trucks. Now what they've done is they've expanded even further, and coming down Maple Street, I've had two, possibly a third situation, I've had to pull over because the 53-foot trucks coming down Maple Street, that road's not made for that. And what happens is it's...something has to be done with Maple Street, widen it. There's no sidewalks there, there's no...I'm not sure what the proper term is, but each side of the road, there should be...there's no gutters there for water to run off. It's an old farm road, if you want to call it. I'd like something to be done about that. And I'm not sure if you can hold Amazon responsible for mitigation because they now have...their trailer park is right off Maple Street. They also have another warehouse down at Camp and Alley. So they're running trucks up and down Turnpike Street. There's no sidewalks on Turnpike Street. When we have the school buses now back in session picking up the kids, again, you want to bring industry into this town, that's good, but you have to expand with the industry. You have to make changes. So I would like you to consider that, and I'm not sure what it would take, whether it's something for a town meeting to appropriate money to redo that road or what. I'm not sure what the procedure is. I'm going to leave that in your hands to see if you would address that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Oh, yes.
Peter, we did engage quite a bit with the police department involved as well with Amazon on that truck traffic, to the point where they understand that they're going to be, if during the busiest seasons, which we went through last year, is that they're going to be required to have a police detail at the top of Maple Street to make sure that traffic can, to move freely. There's no way we can ban them because of the access to that property because it's an allowed use of that. But they...I don't know what's going to happen with them. I've had extensive conversations, and I agree with you. I was on the board, and I wasn't even as a board member allowed to ask questions. And there were basically two members of the Select Board that were given the information with the town manager, and we couldn't even ask questions. We were told if we ask questions, it's going to be bent and they'll pull out of town. And I'll tell you, for what Amazon's done for this town, I wish they never came. Because we gave them a TIF, and we're losing taxes, and they're impacting the area. So we are doing the best that we can to deal with that. They're very aware of the issue of the traffic there, and to the point where we've said if they can't control it, we'll have a police officer at their exit and not letting them go towards the Turnpike Street, forcing them out to Page Street and left at the light, at the top of the street to go to the lights, a controlled traffic control device. So, you know, we're aware of it. It's not that nothing's been done, but, you know, there's a law that says you can't ban interstate commerce. But we can sure as hell, and we will, make sure that we watch out for the safety of our town.
Well, that's, like I said, it's...that road, they have a right to use it. I can understand that. But as a town, you brought that business in.
Yeah, I agree with you.
What happens is you have to expand that road because someone's going to get seriously hurt there if not killed. The other thing is they're down to Camp and Alley. When they come out of Camp and Alley, there's no right turn onto Turnpike Street heading north.
Right.
And the trucks are still doing that.
Right. Well, we need to increase enforcement. That's hard to do right now because we've done it, because I've asked for the reports on enforcement, and I've received them, okay? So the trucks that are going up on that right turn are being pulled over. You're well aware what we did on Chapman Road, and that's not done yet. And I've said in public meetings that I was concerned that with Chapman Road being, you know, cut so they can't use it, there may be increased traffic on your street. And if we have to do that as well, then we've got to do it, you know? And then, again, enforcement. And the police department on Chapman Road did quite a bit of enforcement, and it worked. So we solved that problem, but like you know and I know, we all know, they'll just go to the next road.
Well, I will say on Peter's Drive, I have noticed more cars. I haven't noticed the big trucks. Every once in a while, one will sneak through. The DPW has to put signs at the exit end because people come in from the wrong way.
Right.
I don't know whether they didn't pass reading in school or not, but they don't read the signs. But that's another issue.
Yeah.
And I've seen more Amazon trucks because people are using Amazons. You know, for the most part, most of the trucks go the right way. They're small vans.
Right.
But that's part of commerce. I understand that. But my concern is Maple Street. That has to be expanded, and I'm sure it's not an easy project, but town engineering knows more than anybody how the streets are.
I don't think we should be using taxpayers' money to expand roads so trucks that, you know, can use it more. That's not a road that we need to promote tractor-trailer traffic on. So it's changing a use through zoning. There's going to be some changes down in that area anyway that I think Amazon...I just have a gut feeling with some of the comments made for me that that may solve itself pretty soon.
Well, like I said...
So I hope so. We'll know by the winter.
But if it's a matter of bringing an article before a town meeting to appropriate money to widen that road, I'm a town meeting, I can do that.
Yeah, I think we should wait till winter to find out because it may not be an issue.
Wait until the snow comes.
No, no, no. I'm saying that there may not be traffic there.
No, but I'm saying that road itself, when the snow comes, is going to be even worse. I've noticed that over the years.
Yeah.
But thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Nice to see you.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Ms. Walsh, please step forward. State your name and precinct, please.
And I'd just like to comment on two programs. These were advertised, but not everyone has the time to read everything like I do. And the first one is the annual Stoughton Day is back. It'll be September 24th, which is a Saturday. It's from 11:00 to 3:00 at Halloran Park. And this is a family free event. Obviously, the food trucks aren't free, but there's live performances, inflatables, face painters, and touch a truck, which all little girls and boys love to climb on that big equipment. The other one is very important for our environment for those same boys and girls, and that's the Hazardous Waste Collection Day, which is Saturday, October 1st, from 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at O'Donnell Middle School. And if you have last week's shopper saver, suburban shopper, then you get the details. There are some charges, and I would assume this might be on the Board of Health or the Public Works website, so people would know to bring some cash with them if they have tires, things like that. One of the reasons I'm bringing it up now is October 1st isn't that far away, and this might be a good time for folks to go into the cellar and into the barn and into the garage and wherever they've been storing things for the hazardous waste, start putting them in boxes so they can put them in the trunk of their car and bring them on October 1st. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Walsh, for those announcements. Are there any other citizens' comments? How about on remote? Yeah, online? I don't see any hands raised, but, oh yeah. If not, we'll just move right along to our Select Board comments. I'll start with Mr. Gito. Mr. McCrisky?
Can you get to me last, please?
Yes, I'll take you last at your request. Vice Chair Cavie.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We just completed Labor Day yesterday. It was, two days ago was Labor Day, and yesterday was an election. We've had a couple of days of things, I think we spent some time considering. First, the importance of labor. Maybe not everybody shares the sentiment, but it really wasn't that long ago where people who work for a living had a difficult time being respected. Their safety was not respected. And we developed in the United States a system to protect workers, and our unions have done a phenomenal job for quite a long time doing that. There was a time when I think the unions kind of fell out of favor. I think they're beginning to, I'm sorry, to see some signs that they are coming back into fashion some places. I definitely support that. I think it's an important development and has stabilized our country through some of our darkest times. And so for that, I just wanted to say I hope everyone had a good Labor Day and had at least some time to reflect on the importance of the function of our labor unions. As far as yesterday's election is concerned, I just really wanted to express my thanks to the town clerk, who once again has done a fabulous job, all of our poll workers who work tirelessly through, you know, some very long days to ensure that we have free and fair elections in our, at least our neck of the woods, and have always delivered. And I just want to thank them all for the work they do and for all the people who ran for various seats. This is mostly, you know, since it was primaries, we're talking about statewide elections. We'd also had our state rep and state senator running. And it takes a lot of courage to put yourself out there like that for such a prolonged period of time. So anybody who put the effort in to run for office, I just wanted to thank them, though I'm sure none of them will see this, but generally say thank you for putting in the effort because, you know, for those who won, you know, we wish you the best of luck going forward. For those who didn't win, you know, the country is the way it is because of people like you willing to put, stick their neck out for their fellow citizens, and I just appreciate you taking the time to do it. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Cavie. How about you, Mr. Carr? No comment. The comment I have is to my fellow Select Board members. I wanted to remind you that we sent you an email with a list of special capital projects, and it's due this Friday. And on that list, it's a long laundry list, but we're looking for help, your help, in prioritizing our special projects on the list of things like the armory building stabilization or the train station renovation, online permitting software. stabilization, or the train station renovation, online permitting software. So, once you prioritize that list with your top five and send it back to Ms. Deb LeBlanc.
It's due next week?
It's due next week? Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Deb, because I was getting a little shocked.
And we'll prioritize it and aggregate all the numbers and the list, and then we'll discuss it at a future, our next subsequent board meeting. And that's all I had. Let's move right along to town manager comments.
Thank you very much. I have two comments tonight.
Thank you.
Just a reminder that Paul Newt, the treasurer collector, issued the FY '23 first-quarter water sewer trash bills on August 16th. The bills have a due date of September 15th. Post-mock date is not acceptable as a payment method. Payments must be received in the collector's office or at the lockbox address in Medford. There will be a $15 demand fee added to them if they're late, and they accrue at an interest rate of 14%. Some pretty good news from the Public Works Department. Sorry, I have issues with my printer. Everything prints blue. So, I'm going to have, if I'm misreading things tonight, it's because it's printing blue, so.
That's fun.
All right. Two of our employees from the Highway Foreman, Jonathan Cook, and Operator Richie Jasmine Jr., competed in the Mass Public Works Association Snow Rodeo on August 17th. The event is held annually as a training tool and contest to compete nationally. These two gentlemen won the event and have been invited to compete in the national competition in Colorado at the end of the month. The event includes one day of driving course training and two classroom days with a written exam following the classes. They will earn a certificate from a National Public Works Association for Snow and Ice Operations for the efforts. So, congratulations. They're putting Stoughton on the map for plowing. So, that's all I got. Thank you.
Great. That's such great news. Let's move right along to our consent agenda items. Payroll and bill warrants, approve open session minutes of August 9th, and then Stoughton Youth Baseball amended lease. Does anyone want to pull any of those items?
B.
Okay. Mr. Gito would like to pull B. Okay.
I sent to all of you and to Ms. LeBlanc the amendments that I would like to make to that. If you're comfortable, I won't bother reading them. If you would not be comfortable, then I will. So, if you're, I'm assuming you won't be uncomfortable. So...
I did review those, and I'm looking at Ms. LeBlanc. I think she's made those amendments. Does anyone else have any concern with those amendments? I do not.
Nope. No objection.
So, motion to approve item B.
Okay.
Item B with the amendments?
With the amendments. Thank you very much.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I vote yes as well. And a motion to accept consent agenda item A and C.
So moved.
Second, please?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Moving right along to our public hearing. Vice Chair Cavey, please read the notice of hearing into records, and then I will discuss what the process is.
Yes, ma'am. Town of Stoughton, notice of hearing. A public hearing will be held by the select board on September 7th, 2022, to consider the application of Immaculate Conception Church for two one-day beer and wine permits on September 10th, 2022, and September 11th, 2022, during the Fatima Festival, to take place outdoors at 122 Cannon Street, Stoughton, Massachusetts. Hearing to be held at 8:00 p.m. The hearing will be conducted at the Great Hall, third floor, Town Hall, 10 Pearl Street, Stoughton, Massachusetts, and/or via Google meets, and broadcast via Stoughton Media Access Television and livestream. Google meets video link and telephone connection for public comment available by calling the selectman's office at 71-341-1300, extension 9212, or email to debleblanc@, sorry, d-leblanc@stoughton-ma.gov by or before 4:00 p.m. on September 7th, 2022, per order of Deborah C. Roberts, Select Board, acting as the local licensing authority.
Thank you, Vice Chair Cavey. So, the process will be Vice Chair Cavey will review the checklist after we open the public hearing. The select board will have an opportunity to ask questions. Our citizens will have an opportunity to ask you questions. And then I'll defer back to, oh, that's nice of Ms. Walsh. Thank you, Ms. Walsh. Then I'll defer back to my fellow board members to see if there are any other questions. We'll close the public hearing and then take a vote. Vice Chair Cavey?
Thank you very much. So, we have received back reports from all the town departments.
Do you want to motion to open the hearing, ma'am?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Motion to open the hearing, please?
Motion to open the hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well.
Okay. Thank you very much. So, we've received reports from all of the departments for which we requested reports, responses. Stoughton Police Department, Fire Department, Board of Health, Buildings Inspector, Treasury, DPW, and Water, all have provided responses. All have signaled that they have no additional comments. Just give me one second. I just want to make sure that I didn't miss anything here. That there are no objections to this application. I think the police had some additional items that they wanted to address. No, never mind. Sorry. What's that?
The detour cops?
Yeah, yeah. Thanks, thanks. It was, you have to pardon me. I'm sorry. My brains are a little scrambled right now. So, they recommended four details for each day of the event, as both dates will have a procession. I think that's something that they've already communicated with you, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah. There it is. We can hear you.
No, you're still off. Sorry.
There we go. I spoke to Deputy Chief Holmes. I've been in communication with him. The only thing, the only question I have is, in the past, the procession has always been part of the community events fund that they usually do, that they use. We never paid for details for processions. It's about an hour on Saturday night because it's a candlelight procession after the mass, and then on Sunday again after the mass, it's a procession around 12:15, I would say, because the mass is at 11:00. So, we've never paid for details. And I think he's, if I'm not mistaken, he was here a little bit earlier. Those four offices, I believe, were supposed to be due to the procession. But the feast actually in itself, in the parking lot, on Saturday, I can see four offices. On Sunday, I don't think, I'm hoping that, I mean, they can cut it to two. I'm going to talk to him again because on Sunday, I mean, we're hoping to get a decent crowd, but it's not like Saturday. Saturday, I understand, because a lot of people show for the mass, the procession, and, I mean, you guys have been there at the feast at this one. We haven't had it in, what, three years, I believe. But Saturday does pack up, and we're hoping, you know, we're going to have great weather. So, I can see on Saturday. But Sunday, I'm hoping, you know, communicate with him and see if we can get it down to two. Because, I mean, we're trying to also raise funds here. You know what I'm saying? And then the detail, and I understand, you know, it's the pay rate, you know, you've got to go by it. But, you know, we're just trying to, you know, raise some funds and so. But I will communicate with Deputy Chief Holmes on that a little bit more.
Mr. Alves, I just wanted to make sure that I'm not missing anything here. I know that there's ultimately three different sort of events or items, right, that we're talking about. One is going to be the procession.
Yep.
And then there's the actual festival on Saturday and the festival on Sunday.
Yeah.
So, there's three different, you know, sort of areas where we're going to need details. The procession, I agree with you, in the past, that's been covered by the town.
Yeah.
And I, I'm...
To block the roads, pretty much. Block the roads so we can get around with the procession. And then, once we're into the parking lot, that's where the festival is going to be held. That's where I'm talking about the detail. I don't believe we need so many. But like I said, it's something that we can discuss with Deputy Chief Holmes, and, you know, I'm sure we can work together on that.
And normally, the details that actually take place at the festivals themselves, those are covered by?
Those, we pay.
Covered by you.
The festival pays, yes. Now, the processions, like I said, we don't pay. We usually don't pay. And I'm hoping that continues.
Vice Chair Cavey, did you have any other questions?
No, I've got it. I just wanted to make sure, as we're kind of talking through, I had all the facts, right?
Yep. So, the mass is on, just to give you a heads up, mass is Saturday at 6:00, I believe, at the Immaculate Conception Church, followed by candlelight procession, which we, I believe you guys have the procession route. So, that's going to be after the procession, after it finishes, it goes right into the parking lot, and then that's where the festivities begin, with the live band, food, beer, and all that stuff. Sunday, same thing. The mass is at 11:00 a.m., followed by the procession, same route, back to the church parking lot, and then the festivities, again, begin with where we're selling food, beer, and all that stuff, and there's bouncy houses for the kids and all that stuff. So, am I right, Father? That's correct. Good.
Any questions from my fellow board members? We've, you've had this event practically year after year. It's a great time. It's a spiritual time as well.
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah. Mr. McCrisky?
Not a question, but a comment. And I say this every time Paul is here, is that my hat's off to you, sir.
Thank you.
You know, through pandemic, you kept the club as active as it could be. The guy your age, keeping the traditions alive at St. John's, membership is thriving in a time that, you know, everybody struggles. Feast have been there. And then that wasn't enough for you, that you took on the Lady of Fatima.
I'm actually, I just want to introduce you before you continue. This is the president actually here, Nelson Pimentel. He's, it's his first year, so I'm just, he asked me for assistance and help, and you can't refuse. I mean, he's a great guy. Father Carlos here, I mean, it's our community anyway, so.
But I guarantee you, Father Carlos, Nelson would agree that you deserve accolades.
Thank you.
Okay? Because the leadership that you've provided, Paul, you know, I know that a lot of people have said it.
Appreciate it.
I don't know how many people say it to your face. I know somebody's always got something they say behind our back.
Oh, yes.
And it's always when it can be better. But, you know, the club and the people, you're keeping the traditions alive. I went to feast when my grandmother and grandfather, you remember?
Yes, I do.
Manny and Mary Diaz. Because, don't forget, I'm the mutt. I'm only a half-breed Portuguese, you know?
He used to help with the Lady of Fatima, too, remember?
What's that?
Mr. Diaz, Manny Diaz, used to help with the Lady of Fatima feast.
That's right. The dime game.
Yes, the dime game.
He used to get a lot of people mad at that dime game.
I talked about that the other day. Yeah, absolutely.
He ran that like it was coming out of his own pocket.
Absolutely. I remember. We talked about it the other day.
No, I just want to say again, once again, is thank you for what you're doing.
Thank you. I appreciate the comment.
And everybody that's working with you, as my good friend Kathy at the back of the room, the one that keeps everybody in check, right?
She does a tremendous job, too. She's the secretary of the feast.
You've got a good team. My hat's off to you.
Appreciate it.
Any other questions from my fellow board members? I see none. Citizens, questions from citizens. Yes, Ms. Walsh, please step forward. State your name and precinct, please.
Cynthia Walsh, precinct three. I am so thrilled because I had heard through the grapevine that this wasn't happening. And this is our longest ethnic festival. Okay, the North End just had one that had its 103rd birthday. I don't know how they do it. But it is so important to our community to continue these traditions. I've been marching in the procession since the 80s. I was a small, small child. But my question is always the same for every festa. I do request that whatever police details there are, that one of the detail officers be stationed where the alcohol is sold. It's very important that a good time not be spoiled because the wrong people imbibe too much. And I do agree with the presenters that in the past, the procession has been a community event. And it seems like highway robbery, there's a pun in there somewhere, that they have to pay a four-hour minimum for a one-hour procession for three or four different people. That's just not fair to the group that's trying to keep a tradition alive. In the past, I thought that there were two detail officers stationed at the festa. Did I hear it was going to be three or four? Four? We're talking hundreds and hundreds of dollars. This is for charity. They're not splitting the pot when the whole thing's over. And unless, as someone pointed out, we haven't had it for a couple of years. And I've always been one who said that records should be kept after every festa. If there's been a problem, then the following year, the detail would be increased. I'm not aware that before the pandemic, there was a significant issue the last couple of years. I mean, I can go back, way, way back, to when you were a little boy. But I don't think, I know that it's a public safety issue, and we want folks to be safe. I don't think they're going to get the, unless the weather is super, they're going to get the humongous crowds that we had in the past. And maybe we could go based on, as Paul pointed out, the first night seems to be a bigger night than Sunday. Because Sunday's more of a family day, when you bring the kids and steer them away from the fries and the hamburgers towards some of the more traditional dishes before they can have American food. And I really wish that these folks could sit down with whoever in charge of the details at the police department and talk this over a little. I don't know, what is it? The minimum charge now is 55 bucks an hour? I mean, and it's a four-hour minimum per officer? That's a huge chunk. If we want to keep this going, we have to make it worthwhile for the volunteers.
Excuse me, Ms. Walsh. I think we have an answer for that, and that is the detail officer fee. So...
We actually have a benefit of having Deputy Holmes here. Sir, if you don't mind, just coming forward. In the letter that I have, you say, "I recommend the use of four police details for each day of the event, as both dates will have a procession." And I don't want to put words in your mouth. It seems like you're tying the need for four officers to the procession itself, not necessarily the event that happens afterwards. Given our prior history of covering, of having the town pay for the procession, that would pay for those four officers. Do you think we also need four officers at the festival itself on both Saturday and Sunday?
Good evening. I've had some discussions with, can you hear me all right? I've had some discussions with Mr. Alves about making the safest environment for the procession, and that detail number is four. Because of the timing of the scheduling of the fest and the detail, it just so happens that it would overlap, that the detail officers would be there for the procession, and they'd stay there for the whole detail. I'd be amenable to having further discussion if it meant a savings. But, I mean, we'd have to figure out exactly how many details would be safe. I do know that previous boards have used... I, I do know that previous boards have used the Events Committee money just for the procession part of the details, because it is a community event. But that's entirely up to you.
So, just, just to be clear, you still, you, you currently are still recommending four details at the event itself, the festival, festival for both Saturday and Sunday?
Yes.
Got it. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
And that's from a safety perspective. Do we have anything in a line item that we can use? I don't know.
Well, the, the, well, to be honest, like, the, if they're getting paid a minute, and I, some of these are like things I'm not necessarily privy to, but they, if, if they're getting paid a four-hour minimum, but the town's only covering the, you know, the procession, which I'm guessing is probably, you know, 20 minutes or something like that, or it's just an hour, you know, if you're just, take, take your time. I doubt it's even that long. I mean, the town would almost be covering, if, if we were covering the procession, we would almost, if there's a four-hour minimum, be essentially covering the, the entire event. Because that's, that's a requirement of that, of that payment. So we could, we could just say that we're going to cover the entire event by covering the four-hour minimum. Just by covering, once again, by covering the procession. So we, we would sort of be able to cross off all of those things. I think the event itself is, what, 7:00 to midnight? So you, I think, worst-case scenario, you'd have to cover the detail just for whatever the difference is.
Which I have no, which I have no problem. That's, that's not an issue. I just, I was just trying to, I think where we're overlapping here is the procession. Like, usually the four, to block the roads, I believe, to, you know, to let the procession go around, this and that. I'm just get, I think we're a little confused there is the actual festival itself inside the parking lot. Usually, the police officers that, in the past, that do the procession, they don't stick around. They go. It's because it's paid by the Events Committee, you know what I'm saying, the Events Funds Committee or whatever, Community Events Funds Committee. And then, whoever's working the detail in the parking lot, even if they work six hours, I know they get eight-hour pay, because they get them six, eight, four-hour blocks. If, I know that's, that's, that's true. Let's say if there's three or four officers working that Saturday, I, I don't mind paying the four officers working that Saturday. Just on Sunday, after the procession, like I said, they're going to use the four officers to block the roads, to get the procession back to the parking lot. And then, the festival only starts at 2:00. So those offices that are working the detail, that are working the procession, really don't have to be there until 2:00 o'clock, because that's when the food starts being sold. I mean, the procession will probably arrive, I'd say, maybe around 1:30 after, right? So the feast only starts at 2:00. So that's what I was thinking. Maybe those four officers that are covering the, the parade, the procession, they're all set after, you know, the procession gets back. And then, whoever's doing the detail works from 2:00 to 10:00. Or if, I don't know, if they have multiple, you know, like I said, Sunday, I, I hope we get a couple hundred people. I don't even think we're going to get a couple hundred people on Sunday. Depends. Football season, everything's, you know, kids get back to school. So, I mean, I'm hoping that we get the crowd on Sunday, but I've, that's why I don't do the St. John's feast on Sunday anymore, because it wasn't worth our while. It wasn't. You know, I would rather just do the Mass, procession, and that's it on a, on a Sunday. Saturday is worth a while. And I understand Sunday, Saturday.
I believe, uh.
Something I can work with Deputy Holmes, too. I mean, Deputy Holmes has been terrific with us, so.
He has been.
I have no complaints, and it's something that we can work with together.
Yeah, Paul. The, the requirement is, we're following Deputy Holmes.
Absolutely.
Suggesting on the number of, of officers, right? Detail officers. But I'm wondering if in that line item, so it's, it's, oh, okay, Deputy Holmes.
So I, I think the hitch is that you can't use line item stuff for a charitable event. If, if the, if the events is funding police details only for the procession, I think that's all right. If, if we, I mean, I, I, in the past, I've reduced the number of detail officers for Sunday to two and Saturday for three, if it's, if it's being paid for out of the church. But in this case, I think I spoke with Mr. Alves, and we said that the, the officers doing the procession, the four of them, would stay, because they're already on a four-hour minimum. So, again, I'm, I'm flexible with however this works out. He's got my cell. He's been fantastic, too. And if we need to adjust the numbers, we can do that.
Okay. Great, great. Glad.
That actually might help us out a little bit, actually, the four hours.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think that kind of solves it for that issue.
We won't have an issue at all. I mean, we, we always work it out, so.
Great, great. I just want to move things along. Are there any other citizens' comments? The last we had was, Ms. Walsh, anyone else online that I don't see? Okay.
I do want to say one more thing. I'm sorry.
Yes.
I just want to thank Deb also. She probably doesn't get the gratitude sometimes, but Deb, I, I mean, I've been on emails and phone calls with Deb, helping me out. You know, we had a little issue with the, with the application, where there was only one day on it. Should have been two days, you know, it was a little bit confusing. But like I said, it's just the, the lack of experience at the time, you know what I'm saying? So Deb, thank you very much. I'm sorry for the, and Deputy Holmes, too. I mean, the poor man had to probably write two or three reports, so. I do apologize. I mean, we, we, it's a, it's a learning progress for them, and I can assure you, next year will be a lot better. And I'm sure Nelson would say the same thing, and Father Carlos would say the same thing. But thank you, Deb, for everything you do. Appreciate it.
Okay.
Motion to close the hearing?
Can I get a second?
Second.
Yeah, we did the public. Other than Ms. Walsh, no other comment. Can I get a second to close the hearing?
Second.
A motion to approve the event?
No, no, you get a vote on the closure first.
Oh, we did close it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Vote aye as well.
Motion to approve?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Thank you very much. You have a nice event. And it is so nice meeting you, Nelson, and nice seeing you again, too, Father.
And while I'm here, I'm going to take this time.
One second. I believe that you're under a pretty quick deadline for the license.
Yes. That's what I was going to ask.
Have that, Deb, do we have that tonight? That we can sign it?
Can you email it tomorrow morning? Because I got to get it first thing in the morning to the Bay Company. If you can email it to me tonight, that'd be perfect. That'd be perfect. Awesome. And the last thing I wanted to say, thank you very much again, is procession Saturday night, that's the candlelight procession. But Sunday, we have a lot of organizations from the surrounding, you know, from the community, Portuguese National Club, the Clou Louis Communs, Holy Ghost Society, the Lady of Fatima, the St. John's Band. We're going to be marching the procession on Sunday, and we're hoping to, to see the selectmen, the Board of, Select Board, there we go. The Select Board and the town manager, you might as well join in, you know, to, you know, in the procession. I would say around 12:00, 12:00 o'clock to be there. You're better up in there at 12:00 o'clock. Because Father Eduardo, his masses go a little bit longer, so.
That's on Sunday?
Sunday, yeah.
My wife's birthday is on Sunday. I might have to, I might have, I don't know.
Take her for some babish and some steak tips. You're all set. Best lunch you'll ever have. Desserts, fried dough.
You'll definitely see me on Saturday. I, I can't promise Sunday, though.
To all you guys, thank you very much. Hope to see you guys there.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Paul. Thank you, Kathy Wolfram.
Bye. Moving to item number seven, that is the 2023, 2024 Town Meeting Articles and Budget Timeline. Is Mr. Rowe on the line?
Is Bill Rowe on the line?
Is Bill Rowe on the line?
Good evening, Madam Chair. Bill Rowe, Town Accountant.
Hi, Mr. Rowe. Okay, so we're just going to jump right in to the timeline. And this was presented at a previous meeting. Were there any changes, or did you want to utilize it? Any additions to the timeline?
Not that I know of, Madam Chair. We, as I mentioned to you, the budgets are due to be entered by the department heads into the financial system by October 4th. So that's 30 days earlier than last year. So that will give us a good head start. But no other changes that I'm aware of, unless the manager has some comment.
Okay. So, oh, I see. Mr. Tisdale, you had a comment?
Yeah. If I could add to that, I presented that, the draft timeline to the department heads this week at the Department Head Meeting. Everything seemed to fall in pretty align. Everybody was a little concerned about the first step, the, the middle of the department budgets by October 4th. It is a month earlier. I do want to be earlier than last year, because I think you're always kind of chasing yourself with this. But it, I think it would, an extra two weeks would be wise. I think that date of October 4th actually falls on a Tuesday, if I looked at it correctly. It's a Tuesday. Maybe not a full two weeks, but maybe the, due on that Friday, the 14th, would, would help out a lot.
Yes, I, we could be flexible with that.
Yeah, Octo- October 14th for department budgets due. We do have a lot of new department heads, and they've never entered their budgets into MUNIS before, so there's going to be a little bit of training involved with that, and it would certainly help us out.
And Madam Chair, we're hoping for also, for some extra time for the, the budget team to sit down with department heads, and have them go over their budget, line item by line item. Department heads have requested that as well. Kind of gotten away from that the last couple of years, but, you know, that, that's an important function as well, to, to sit down. Sit down and review, you know, the changes with each department head. And so that this, the, the October 4th date should help to facilitate that.
Okay. So, Mr. Rowe, when will we have the numbers for the certified new growth? And what I'm really asking is about the TIFs that expired? And that is going to be approximately $50,000, right?
I believe that's right, yes.
Okay.
Fiscal '24. We should have the fiscal 2023 new growth shortly.
I'm sorry.
We should have the fiscal 2023 new growth shortly. I haven't checked with the, I could check with the Assessing Department and see if they've heard anything yet on that. But it's usually certi, it's usually certified by the Department of Revenue around this time. It was not in Gateway, the DOR's portal. It hadn't been posted yet, so. I'll, I'll try to get you a timeline for that.
So is that new growth number approximately 500,000? So 800, that's because of the expiration of the TIFs. So 800,000 is what we typically see, and then, with the TIFs expiring, that's an additional 500,000, so roughly 1.3 million?
Madam Chair.
Is that a, a new number?
Madam Chair.
Oh. I didn't know where that was coming from.
It was me. The questions you're asking in the, don't seem to comport with what I see on the agenda here and the, the material that, that we've received. So I'm wondering, am I the only one that seems to have a different set of information?
So, Mr. Gito, I'm trying to figure out, when would we know about new growth?
Well, I'm trying to figure out what we're talking about here.
Oh, okay.
In terms of the timeline.
Okay.
You're, you're somewhere else here, and I have a timeline that is different from the timeline that you're talking about. I don't see an October 4th anywhere in the packet that was given to us. There may be another October 4th in another packet from a couple of years ago. And I'm happy to be dealing with it as long as I can keep up with, so I know that we're all talking about the same thing. Because I have a number of concerns with this process, so I don't want to sort of be off track.
Okay. So.
So tell me where we are.
I have, I have something.
Okay. I see Deborah is holding up something, and she's closer to you.
That's the one that I see.
I believe that what Mr.?
And it also says.
Mr. Tisdale.
It also says, "Prepared on October 9th, 2018."
Right.
Now, there was something else from.
Mr. Gito, I believe Mr. Tisdale is going to explain, and then, I'll just hold up what I'm looking at. But anyway, Mr. Tisdale, because you mentioned the October 4th date.
So I believe Ms. Roberts was looking for a template of a schedule for Town Meeting. And when I did this last time in 2018, I prepared one to work off. So I think you're looking at an older version. It might have got miscommunicated somehow. There's a newer version that has very similar dates to that, but they're off by a week or two in different spots. The newest version for this year's Town Meeting has October 4th for department budgets being due. That's the one I'm requesting adding about, just over a week and a half to, which kind of falls in line with the schedule from 2018, roughly.
Thank you. So going back to new growth, and we're just trying to finalize that, where should we insert that on the timeline? I'm trying to get ahead of, of our process by really understanding when we'll know that it has been certified, so we can develop some type of direction to the department heads, or possibly develop a policy. What would we do with the overage due to the TIF expiring? So if we're typically seeing, used to seeing in our budget or our certified new growth process around 800,000, and with the TIFs expiring, that might be an additional 500,000, which increases that amount to 1.3 million dollars. So I wanted to know, so I can present, and hopefully, we have a motion if we're going to, not you, I guess you can't say, but not use the full Proposition 2 and a half levy limit. So where should we put that in our whole timeline, so we have ample time to discuss it? I was asking, Mr. Rowe?
October 15th.
October 15th?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you very much. And that's a new date that's not on here, because we did not know.
Right. And if there's any changes to that, I will, you know, we'll let you know. I'll try to call the Department of Revenue tomorrow, where I'll have the assessor call.
Thank you very much. To my fellow board members, are there any other line items that we should be included in our budget timeline? Our policy is online, if there's anything we needed to change.
Yes.
To make our process a little bit more efficient. And I'll, I'll recognize Mr. Gito.
Yes. Thank you, Madam Chair. One of the things that's not on here is our long-range planning. And it needs to be on here because it is a duty of the Board of Selectmen to do that. In fact, it's the first duty of the Board of Selectmen to do that. It's something that we have not done last year. It's not shown up in the Town Report from last year. And we have been avoiding it. We talked about it on, I believe, the 21st or thereabouts of April. We talked about it on, I believe, the 21st or thereabouts of April, when we were talking about having a long-range plan and having a group of people come together and review that long-range plan and choose the things that were going to be on it year to year. But we have stopped doing that. We have not started that up again. And it needs to be in place. It's a duty that we have that we have not done. And it's not something that says, "We may do it." It says, "We shall do it." I could read it to you if you would like. But that needs to be in here. And I believe before, in the, I have to look at another page. Just give me a second.
Certainly.
In the draft policy of November 21st, 2020, that five-year operating and capital budget plans were August 15th. Obviously, August 15th is past. But it needs to be done in order for us to be able to put together a full plan. My understanding was that that was going to occur sometime in early to mid-October, if I'm not mistaken. And it's not shown on here, and it needs to be on here. It's not a "may be" on here, it's a "must be" on here.
So yes, anything else, Mr. Gito, on that?
Not on that particular item. But when we get back, when we get back into the discussion on the earlier pages, then I will.
Give me one, one second, I just wanted to address.
I'm going to just finish my sentence.
Okay, go ahead.
I have some other comments.
Okay. So regarding the, the capital plan that you mentioned, well, we are kind of at a divide. The last time that we had our select board meeting and we talked about the timeline, well, Vice Chair Cavie, well, we talked to Mr. Tisdale, and then Vice Chair Cavie said, and I'm just summarizing, that it was unfair that he developed a multi-year capital plan. And then we had a long discussion on what is a capital plan? And we talked about a regular capital plan such as trucks, anything that has over a five-year life. And then we also talked about a special capital plan, and these are the projects. So to try to, I guess, accommodate your request and Vice Chair Cavie's request, we came up with the capital project survey. Because this is not, these items are not something that can be accomplished in one year. And those are those items like the depot, the train depot, or the armory, or, what is that, the armory building, train station renovation, online permitting software. So we need, how are we going to prioritize those? Because you have certain, I'm just making this up because I don't know for sure until we have.
I'm trying not to make it up. What I'm trying to do is to establish a time when we're going to have that information together so that we can do what we are required to do.
So first, we need the priority list, Mr. Gito.
And so I understand that what we need to do is put together material that says, these are the things that, that the town is facing. We have a lot of things, and I've talked about a number of them in the past. So I mean, it's not that I'm not aware of that. But we have to be able to put together that plan. And it has to be able to be executed in, in time. But it has to be put together. You know, the people in the town are expecting us to be able to determine how we are going to finance the operations of the town for several years in a row. We did not do that last year, and we seem to be on track to not do it again this year. And I'm not particularly pleased with that at all. So I'm asking where that's going to be. I understand that Mr. Cavie thinks that it's unfair. It's part of a job.
May I offer?
Vice Chair Cavie?
Yeah.
Then Mr. Tisdale.
Thanks. I, my recollection of the last time we discussed this was, I did express that. I thought it was, it was putting more on than Mr. Tisdale than, than he necessarily deserved. But as I recall, he had also sort of corrected me in a sense in saying that most of that information, that most of the things that, that we would need, he already has. The only components that he needs to plug into it are the components that really depend on, on our input. So, so it sounds like he's able to produce that so long as we fulfill our own job of going through that, the priorities list and providing him with the projects, the special projects, really. Those are the components that he needs from us in order to plug those in. And I think that's, that makes sense to me. So I think we can, we can do that. I don't want to make things confusing here, but in the last couple of years, I have put together a calendar of all of the events leading up to town meeting. I have that now. I would just like to maybe open that up and just make sure that if I'm missing something like what you're describing, if it's not articulated in there, that we added in there so that, so that we have especially anything that's required by statute or even by our own policies. If you allow me to share, share my screen, it might not.
Yes, Vice Chair Cavie.
Let's see if I can get this to work. So this is a preliminary version, and it's very small. But I can, let's see if I can make this big enough for people to see. Nope.
The one that I've looked at through, through you, Madam Chair, to the, to Mr. Cavie.
Yes.
Is the one that is part of the Selectmen's policies in the shared drive that we have.
I probably have.
And it is, it says Draft 1121, 2020. And it is from that that I pulled October, August 15th from. And that's the thing that we had been talking about for the last, well, I've only been on the board for just a little over a year. But last year, we talked about this and didn't do it. And so I'm not interested in not doing it again this year. I'm expecting that we're going to do it this year. And so if Mr. Cavie is looking at something different than what I'm looking at, it hasn't been anything, we haven't had a policy change.
Yeah.
On that.
I can't, I can't, I can't be certain that, that that policy has made it into this calendar. These were things that I put together based on really statutory requirements for the most part. These are all from the town charter, from, from Master General Law, as well as there are some items that are, that do have these more unofficial policy dates. For example, there's a number of CPC application dates that their program administrator provided to me last year that I've updated to this year. I've got to confirm with them that these dates are correct, that they're still valid. I can't just necessarily move it one year forward. I think that some of these, like the first two, I have CPC pre-application due, 9/25. I think the 25th was like, is a fixed date. Every year is by the 25th. But there are other ones, like December 7th. They have a presentation of preliminary budget. I think that's based, I think that's variable. I think it changes, like whatever the, you know, the, the first Wednesday is of the year, whatever that it might be. So I've got to fix some of these dates. The ones I have here in green are ones that are pretty much locked in with regard to the submission of the school fiscal year budget. Their general policy is to give it to us sometime in the middle of, of December, between the first and, you know, first day of December and the middle. So that one's pretty much locked in. That is not by statute, it's just, has been their, their general practice. And then we have, you know, a number of other things that are all by statute. And I think that the only things related to capital plans, these were our policies I have here is January 3rd. I think last year was January 4th. Presentation of preliminary capital requests, presentation of town manager budget, and the submission of capital requests, all happening within about a two-week period in the first week of January.
Reading from something that we have?
Well, these were things that we actually did, like this last year, like these were the actual dates that we used. And so if, if those are, don't abide by our internal policies, then we can certainly address that now and move them up and do what we have, or we had to. But in practice, what we've actually had is that happen, usually in the first week of January. But we should, we should make sure they align with, with our policies. And I haven't looked at that policy in a little while, so I might, I might not have incorporated those dates.
Thank you, Vice Chair Cavie. I just want to defer to Mr. Tisdale. Mr. Tisdale, if we have our special project list completed by Thursday, September 15th, and then we have our following board meeting, I guess that's the 20th, and we provide you with that prioritized list, when would you be able to reasonably have a discussion with us so we can work together on a multi-year capital special project plan? Because you were already doing the special. We're talking about, I'm sorry, the capital project plan, now we're talking about the special.
So, so just to recap, I totally agree with Mr. Gito, and we need a five-year plan. It's in the charter. It's your responsibility to have that. For some reason or another, we haven't had one in the 11 years I've been here. If we had one, it wasn't full, fully complete. So we're trying to get one together. I was under the impression that most of the department capital for the five-year was completed. We had a meeting last week with our, I formed a small task force with department heads with the larger cap, some of the larger capital. And it, the sheet needs to be revised. Some of the information's old. So what we're literally doing as we speak is creating a Google Sheet with that information and having department heads verify the information in it, that it's correct. That's department capital. We'll know what that is. We have good estimates on those numbers. The special projects, you know, right now, we're just trying to gather the projects, right? The list of projects. There's no money associated with those projects right now. But some of these have very lofty descriptions, you know, you know, there's a wide range. Once we narrow, the point is narrowing that list down from 15, 20, whatever, whatever it ends up being, narrowing it down to a top five, or 10, or three, whatever the board decides. Then drilling down into those projects of exactly what are we going to do? It doesn't have to be very detailed, but we have to put a cost to it so we can roll it into the capital plan. That's going to take a little bit of time to do, that part. Then the other part of it is the school capital that we need to roll into the, into the capital plan to make the capital plan complete. So you have the town department capital. That, I'm very confident we can get done in, by some date in October. The special project, I'd like to think that we could get something done by a certain date. But that's going to be more complicated than we think. First of all, just to agree on what those projects are, is going, should be decided at a select board meeting. It should, those are special projects. They aren't department head projects, they're, they're select board projects. We also need to think about some of those other boards and committees that might have special projects that you want them to feed to your board so you can include in your special project list. So it might not just be select board projects. It might be, say, you know, we want to do trail improvements, you know, to three different spots in the next five years. You might want to look for the Conservation Commission, or CPC, or some other board for input on that, on that. So what I'm getting to is, I think the special projects, if you want a really complete plan, not something that you're just sticking on a spreadsheet somewhere and checking the box, I mean, you really want to gather information from multiple committees and boards, make sure your board's on the same page of what you want, and then we can get a cost associated with it, then project it to a year and roll it into the capital plan. One part of the capital plan, the most important part of the capital plan, is listing projects out. The second most important part, or maybe the most important part, is how do you pay for it? So we can put as many projects as we want into it and have the best plan ever, but we can't pay for it. What point of it? What's the point of it? So to me, I don't want to give your board something that's just a small piece of it. I can, I can give you department capital for the next five years very easily, I think, by October. But if you want a true capital plan, it's going to take some work. And honestly, it should be something that's done throughout the whole year and not at a particular point in time. And I think just right now, with department heads right now, there's a lot of department heads wearing multiple hats. It's very difficult to do these special projects right now and trying to complete a project that should have been done years ago. And this town manager here, right now, I've been doing it for three months. I am also doing three other jobs at the same time. It's very hard to do these, these intense projects. We're negotiating contracts now. We're getting ready for budget season. Every day, I'm used to a list. And I typically have this list on my desk, and it never gets complete because the day just goes on, and that's part of the job. But what I'm getting to is, it's hard to set a specific date and time for this capital plan to be complete if you want it to be full and include those three areas, the special projects, the schools, and the town. That's all. Thanks.
And the fourth part, the fourth part of that plan is actually the routine and important maintenance that needs to be done and upgrades to systems. And that's, part of that is, is in the plan, and part of it's just ongoing work. And we have, in the town's possession, a water supply plan. We have a roadway plan, and I believe we have a sewer plan. And I don't know if we have a drainage plan. And those things all need to be in this, in this long-range plan. And they indicate, year to year, what expenditures should be made, at least according to the people that we've asked that seem to know what they're doing, to, to provide that. And those costs for, for water are basically five or six million dollars a year. And for the, the roadways, there's about a $25 million backlog that indicates that if we do routine maintenance on roads, it costs $8,000 a year. If we do sort of special maintenance, it may cost $100,000. If we do minor rehabilitation, it's cost $200,000. And if we do major rehabilitation, it costs $600,000 per mile. Those are all per-mile costs. So that we have information available to us that says that we have, by not doing the things that we should have been doing year after year after year, and putting those things off, we are increasing the cost that a taxpayer a whole lot. And that's not a problem that the employees of the town have. That's a problem that we have by not telling the town that if they don't pay for these things, then it's going to cost them more as time goes on. And that's our job, and we're not doing it. That's not the town employee's job, that's this board's job. That's the end of my little speech for a moment. But it's going to be a recurring theme, let me tell you, between now and the time that I get off of this board.
Mr. Gito, can you help us by developing a plan?
No, I cannot. But what I can do is I have already begun to put together the information. But what I can do is, I have already begun to put together the information from those reports, and if they were all online, like they are in the town of Easton, then everybody would have been able to see those year to year. We can all do that. I cannot do that. I will not do that. But I seem to be doing more than my part so far.
So where do we land on the date that we can put that on our timeline?
What exactly are we putting in the timeline? I'm confused exactly what the scope of this timeline is. Are we putting the full, the entire capital plan for the whole town on the timeline? Are we putting the department capital on it? I mean, I just explained to you how complicated this project is to do the full thing. I mean, you want somebody who's been doing this for three months to do the whole capital plan for the town in a month? I don't think so. It ain't happening. If you wanted to do a five-year, a five-year for capital department stuff, we can do that. So we need to be clear what we're asking for, and then I can tell you a date that we're doing it.
Okay.
Madam Chair?
Oh, I was going to respond. Go ahead.
Well, no, I'm just saying, and I guess I would suggest that maybe you just meet with Mr. Tisdale, or you and the vice chair, work with Mr. Tisdale, go under it. Mr. Gito had a 15-minute speech, but said he doesn't have a plan. So, I mean, I would like to hear more of what Mr. Gito would like to see in that.
I can show you exactly what I would like to see in that, and I can tell you-
The chair just asked you if you could help, and you said no.
No, she said, could I put together the plan? I will be happy to share all the information that I have. I've shared some of that already, and I will be happy to share all the rest of it that I have.
But you have a good concept of what you'd like to see.
You better believe it.
Okay, but then why don't you help out in that process, instead of just giving information? I'd like to see you a part of that process. You're so adamant about it and well-spoken on it.
Now, Mr. McCrisky, thank you very much for the compliment. And let me also say that I have laid out and told you what some of those costs are. I have not showed you all of those costs because I cannot do that until I look at some other reports. But they are all there, and trust me, I have a very long list of things that we have been talking about for the last year. And I will get that all to you.
Great.
She didn't ask me if I would participate. She asked me if I would do it, and I said no.
Okay, okay.
So be clear what I said.
I hear engagement, and I guess I think of differently, as you are looking at just, would you do it? I say, would you do it, be involved, whatever. Okay, let's not split hairs.
No, no, I like to split hairs because you were accusing me of something-
I wasn't accusing you. See, there you go, Lou. I wasn't accusing you.
You weren't.
I want to engage you, Lou, but you go in defense mode when you don't hear what you want to hear.
Oh, really?
You know, I'm not looking to get adversarial this. I would like you to be involved.
Believe me, I'm planning to be involved.
Good. That's good.
There you go.
Yes, Mr. Tisdale?
The only way to get this plan done, pretty much like anything in this town, is to work as a team. We've got to all get together and make some decisions. I will tell you, everybody's been very helpful on this capital plan with giving direction on what you want. We know what the plan needs to look like. There are very great plans done by other towns. The end product is very clear what we need to get. It's very clear. To get there is, Mr. Gito has done a lot of, he sent me a nice email with a lot of his ideas on it, very comprehensive, but it is still one small portion of it. These special projects are another portion, the school stuff's another portion. So there needs to be some thought for the full capital plan on how that's going to be done, and there needs to be a lot of time given to that. That's not something we want to rush. It's our next five years of planning. So I think we just need to be clear again on what the scope is, and then we can define a due date for it.
Mr. Gito, can you help define the scope? Is that a yes or no?
I can provide the information that I can on the scope of it. I've tried to lay out for you and the other members of the board and the public because they're the ones who actually decide how much money is going to be spent to do the things that need to be done in the town. It's not you and me. It's the voters who do that. And they don't do it by voting just who's sitting here. They vote it by saying what they want to have, like they did for the fire station, like they did for the high school. And if they saw that if they spent a little bit more money on an annual basis to fix things rather than defer them and have the costs go up maybe 100-fold, or 50-fold, they might be willing to do something else. But as we've said here, we've deferred these things for 20 years. It's time to get back and do our job. And yes, I'll help you as much as I can.
Thank you, Mr. Gito. I'll put it on the agenda, I think it's the September 20th, and that's after we get the survey, and then we can develop a project plan to address the capital, special capital project plan.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. McCrisky?
I did mention a while back that I would be out of town that week. Not that I have to be here, nothing should stop, but if it's something that you feel that you would like to have a full board, I just want to remind you that that week from the 16th is coming back on the 25th, and I did mention that one other time.
You did, you did.
Okay, so I just want to advise you I was going so that, you know, but again, it doesn't stop because I'm not here. So go right ahead if you feel that you don't need me, on some issues if you do, just want to remind you, that's all.
Okay. So is everyone comfortable with that? And that is, we'll have our survey results back that we have done, and then we'll discuss and develop next steps. Is everybody comfortable with that?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. So let's move to the next agenda item, please, and that is agenda item number nine. Ms. Bruce, if you would step forward, and Mr. Kuchan. So this item is beautification of downtown lights request. It's $8,300. And what we're trying to really understand is if, because we have nothing in writing, and we want to actually say if we should increase the scope or keep it as is, and it's my understanding that it was during our most recent budget process, we talked about, or Mr. Gito specifically, asked for dollars to be earmarked for downtown beautification. Fast forward to today, what is the meaning of beautification? Because we were actually thinking of using those dollars, and it's $8,300 right now that I'm talking about, for lights downtown. Mr. Tisdale actually asked me to put this on the agenda, and I absolutely said yes because I don't want to be disrespectful to Mr. Gito's scope of request. And then we go from there. And also, Mr. McCrisky had some recollection of actually the words and the scope of beautification. So in all fairness, the only time we can get together because of open meeting laws is in this type of forum. So thank you for meeting with us today, and we'll move forward on this. I don't know who's going, okay, Mr. McCrisky?
Madam Chair, thank you. I'll start right off, and I think everybody knows where I'm going. And I think this is extremely dangerous for us to do. It is unusual. We're two months into our new budget, and we want to drain this money to be gone. This money was vetted, and if we were to pull up the minutes and if we were to go back to the audio, you know, TV cameras, it was that we were talking about beautification for flowers, shrubs, trees, or whatever were discussed, you know, and it was very clear. But now we're going to empty the $8,000 account out to rent holiday decorations. I don't feel comfortable going before the finance committee with this dollar amount for what we explained, then going to town meeting, it wasn't debated, but it was presented, and then to just take it and use it for a totally different issue. And I don't believe, you know, and I've got some experience, and Janice, I can look right at Janice and say, I'm sorry I can't be with you on this because I share your passion for the holiday. We've worked before about lights. We've talked about lights. This is not the way to do it, in my opinion. I can't support it. I won't vote for it. I just think this is wrong. If we're not going to use the money for its intended purposes, it should be turned back. And that's my feeling. You know, I won't be voting for this, whatever my colleagues decide to do, but I think we're setting a very, very dangerous precedent of changing the scope of what we use the money for after we went through a lengthy, very lengthy discussion on this, came back to it, I believe, three times before we finalized the issue. So I won't be saying another word about it, let everybody else decide what they want to do, but I can't support it. I'm sorry.
So maybe I could, maybe I could say a word or two.
Yeah, Mr. Gito, I'm recognizing Mr. Gito.
Thank you. When this topic came up first, it was for much more money than the $8,300. It was to put money into, to beautify the entrances to the downtown, and to do other things with smaller parks and areas. The board voted four to one against doing that. This board voted four to one against doing that. The town manager came back and said, well, basically, the last minute of when the budget was being put together, we'll put $8,300 in the, for beautification of the downtown. There was no discussion as to whether or not that would be for flowers, or it would be for something else. And I wasn't opposed to that. It's better than nothing. I mean, to me, maybe I wouldn't plant, I wouldn't put lights on, but it seemed to me that soon after that became a budget item, there was discussion. My wife was on the beautification committee, and there was discussion about using that money for lights. Didn't bother me. I mean, if that's what they wanted to do, the $8,300 was there. So I'm not opposed to doing that. But it wouldn't have been there if I hadn't wanted more money for something different. That's where it is, and there wasn't something that said, oh, it has to be for flowers. There was no discussion about that. There was no discussion about that.
There was a lot of discussion about that, Mr. Gito.
There was.
And I guess I'll respond to you after.
Yes, Mr. Carr?
The initial discussion was for more money. It was like 20, $23,000 or something Lou was looking for, or 22, but the former town manager says, oh, that money's not really there. And then we had to go into, was it their mode or was it not their mode? But we did discuss not the entrances to the square as much as we were talking, we use the term gateways. And I can't remember who was sitting here talking about the gateways, but I got it written down in my notes, and if we need it, I'll dig it out. But we were talking, oh, what we're going to do when putting trees here and certain things, you know, the corridor of 138 and this and that. We didn't know why we were going to do it because we didn't know if 138 was going to, they were talking about redoing it. So why are we going to put trees in there? And then we found out there really wasn't money, so we ended up with, I call it pittance. It was like, here, shut yourself up type money. Do I think it was for flowers and trees and stuff? I do. Because that was the discussion. It was how to improve the gateway in North Stoughton a little bit more, or south on 138 coming from Easton, there's nothing there. Sinage. That was what we discussed. And I know I got it written down. Joe's right. I'm not for having somebody come in, take this money, and like rent lights, put them up. Because once they go up, are we going to call the person and say, hey, there's a bulb out? They're not going to care. They're not going to care. And I think, and I had said it before, why don't we get our own lights? We have a boom truck at the Public Works. Put them up, have them put them away properly this time. And if they don't put them away and the money's wasted, then we take it out of their budget for their malfeasance of taking care of the stuff. That's how you handle it. This renting or having somebody come in to decorate our square is ridiculous. I'm sorry, I think the world of you, Janice, but this is foolish. Lou's wife, they go out there, they water the flowers. They don't hire somebody to come in with a water buffalo and pour the water in. I see them up in North Stoughton, taking their life in their hands, putting flowers in those buckets up there. Cars going by at 65, trying to race the lights, putting flowers and stuff. Maybe we got to hire people to put flowers in. Can't we do anything ourselves that it's always money, 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 out the door, and big money? We're not talking $8,300. There's another pile of money coming from another avenue. We're talking $16,000, $18,000. You can buy a lot of lights for $16,000, $18,000 and have guys who are on the work. You'll have time to talk. Don't worry. Plenty of time. I'm just getting my piece out, what I feel. Everybody else did, this is our time. Then you can tell me I'm all wrong. I don't hire somebody to decorate my Christmas tree. And we're not stringing them across the street, we're running them up poles that Public Works is going to back into anyhow when we plow snow. So don't worry about it.
Madam Chair?
Yes, I recognize Mr. Gito.
What we do do is have a number of people stand on ladders in the square, putting those things up, my wife included, who's just a few years younger than I. So it's not as though we have Mr. Carrara with his equipment coming out and doing that. We have a group of people who come and water the flowers in the square. We have another group of people who go up in North Stoughton and do the same thing. And we expect that to be done, and we don't respect them when they say, well, you know, we have this job to do that we've been doing ourselves for the last several years. And finally got somebody who said, oh, yes, indeed, we can- We can put, electrify the poles in the downtown," which took years to get people to figure out that they could, in fact, wire those things. And now they want to be able to use those and put up some lights because people wanted the decorations in the square and have been doing that, putting garland on and whatever, and watering the pots and everything else downtown. None of us are doing it. It's a whole bunch of other people that these people are, are working with. And we're saying, "Oh, no, you can't do that because we want it to be some other way." Well, maybe we all ought to get our butts down to the square and do some of that work ourselves or let the people who've been doing what they've been doing for the last 20 or 30 years, and that's how long that's been going on, and let, get out of the way and let them do something.
Thank you, Mr. Gito. Mr. McCrisky?
Well, I just got it because Mr. Gito brought this up and Select Carrara pointed out the other part. We started out talking about an amount of money that none of the board members, four members that voted against it, supported. And then, to her credit, the former town manager said, "Listen, we have this money. It, you know, we can put something into that." So that's where the conversation ended, okay? And I can sit here and say that I've done my fair share of putting holiday decorations up and banners. Again, Mr. Gito, when nobody else was there but a very small group of people that climbed those same ladders, and Janice was there when we decorated the gazebo, and there was only a handful of us there. So a lot of people over the years have done a lot. I just don't think this is the way to go. This money, from what I understand, because there was a presentation that was on cable TV, that this was going to be the Friends of Stoughton Center that was, was going to make these expenditures. So now we're going to be giving money out of a town budget to a nonprofit organization? You know, I mean, I don't know if we can do that. It was said earlier by the Deputy Chief, you know, that we can't put money, town money into a nonprofit. They haven't been vetted. So what other nonprofit would we, then, if we start this process, what other nonprofit's going to come up? But see, I'd like to take a couple hundred dollars out of your budget. I can do a great thing in the town. You know, I think we're going down a very slippery slope. I think it, you know, you want to talk about credibility of the things we should be doing with our finances? I don't think this is the way to go. I have no problem, like we did years ago, of putting in a dollar amount for holiday lights and buying them. Scott's right. We spent probably $30,000 in holiday decorations back in the late 90s, early 2000s. And when the DPW building was renovated, low and behold, poof, they went off into thin air. We don't know what happened to them. They were lost during the reconstruction, is what I was told. I have to question that they didn't want them because they want to put them up. That's what I think it was. And there was a lot of money, town taxpayers' money, wasted. And I think some people will remember when we had the garland, and it wasn't that long ago, garland going through the square, poles lit up, we had some wreaths out, we had the, you know, decorations at both ends of the center of town. I was the one, people were there, that rented a lift and went to the top of the pine tree in Faxon's Park. I sat there and swayed to put the lights up myself. So things can get done. It's better for us, and I don't have a problem in the next budget putting $30,000 in for holiday lights. I agree. I would like to see Norman Rockwell in downtown. I think we did pretty good some years back, but we owned it. Renting it for this amount of money doesn't make sense to me. It just doesn't. We can buy a lot of holiday decorations for 16 grand, you know, and for 8,000 in this budget if we chose to do that. So again, I just wanted to clear it up because, yes, we started talking about gateways. We were talking about plantings. I remember, because if you remember as well, Lou, that in 1994, when we started, we did all these plantings in downtown, and we put the big planter boxes in, and they were all decorated. Mr. Lindwall at one year got plants and hung them from all the poles. You know, those things are happening. And I applaud that and want everything to happen. But I agreed that this money, the smaller amount of money, was good because it would help these volunteers have resources if they need watering jugs, if they want to buy the flowers. We did that years ago because we got donations from Pollio's as well, and they were made available. There was accounts that we set up then to tell Pollio bill it to this line item so that when Mrs. Jarden and your wife started, they went down and bought supplies. I'm all for that. I disagreed with the larger amount of money, 8,000. That's workable, you know, but I just think, you know, this doesn't, I don't think this fares well for us that we put it into the budget and then change the use of it. Now, if I'm all voted fine, but I also have a larger thing that if the town was going to be making the expense for these directly, there's a different thing. But if it's going to go to a nonprofit, if I understand correctly, the Friends of Stoughton Center, that's a nonprofit. They're not, they're not a town board. So we open up, I think, a very dangerous thing for other nonprofits to come in and say, "Give us some money too. We've been doing this for a long time. You haven't given us any money." That's a very dangerous precedent, and I might be sure if it's legal. So I would want to get, you know, a ruling from Town Council. Can we do this? Can we give the money to a nonprofit? If they say no, then we just set up another reason if we were going to, you know, do that. But that's going to be the board's choice.
Well, Mr. McCrisky, I would like to ask Ms. Bruce and Mr. Cauchon, you know, the complete story because it's, I don't know how a nonprofit plays a role. We're talking about $8,300. Can it be funded for lights? Or is it restricted funds or earmarked for beautification as defined by plants and flowers? So please help us out in your understanding of this whole issue.
I definitely sense that there's a little confusion going on because I think some of this discussion Matt and I weren't privy to. Can you hear that? Okay. So the, some of the discussion that you're having is not what Matt and I were privy to. So thank you for having us tonight. I really wanted to be able to give you a little background of how we came to be at this place and this $8,300. So before we talk about the $8,300, I just wanted to say, in the not my lights, I just want to say I'm working on behalf of the town. We have gotten a lot of people that have expressed interest in residents, committees, town departments, and businesses on improving the appearance of the downtown, which we are actively working on with the new building and just hoping to get better businesses down there. So if anyone during the holiday season has ever gone through surrounding towns, if you go through Norwood and see their beautiful lights that they've had for years, and then you go through Sharon, and you go through Canton, and then you come to Stoughton, and it's very dark. And this is something that people have in my line of work with home care and just running into all kinds of people. They have known that the VNA has decorated the gazebo, and we always get the comments, "How come our downtown does not look festive?" Matt does a great job. He helps with the menorah on one end, and we have the Christmas tree on the other end. But it has been years since we actually had any really decorations other than a little bit here and the other stores that are down there generally aren't stores or storefronts that are going to be decorated, and then we have a lot of empty storefronts. So this year, we, we were really hoping to be able to make an impact. So during the pandemic, the Malpe Company, which I would love to give a big shout out to, donated their equipment and their crew on a weekend to pay for getting lights up in Faxon Park and in front of the town hall. That was really great. Is it something that we're going to have every year? I don't know. It's, I mean, they put them up, and they've taken them down all on their own expense. Matt, out of his budget, was able to purchase some of the lights. But what we found was that the lights didn't, didn't really last as long as we had hoped. They got weather beaten. So we really were just trying to figure out a way that we could have something that would, would work. So we approached the previous town manager and asked her at that time, did she think that we could seek getting some help with holiday lights and that other towns, and the Malpe Company did mention this, do have a professional company come in to put the lights up? So we thought, she said, "Yeah, sure. Why don't you see what's available?" So that's how we got into that. The $8,300, when the budget came to that, the $8,300, at that time, we're told it was going to be for plantings and lights. So the discussion that you all had behind the scenes is not what we knew. We thought it was going to be for both things. Well, I wasn't on the meeting. Okay, not behind the scenes, but at that time, the previous town manager. Matt?
It was at a Zoom meeting. It's where it was.
Anyway, we felt that we had some funding. So then we reached out to the Beautification Committee, who has done a great job with the plantings and the Friends of Stoughton Center, to see if they wanted to talk about it. And they were sort of for it, to try to try something new this year. It doesn't mean it has to be every year, but we wanted to give it a try. So that's where we were at. We had met with the man from Curb Fusion, and we did do a walk through the downtown. And he gave us some ideas on what he thought would work. And we felt that, that we did have some funding. And then we got a commitment from one of the banks and from the SRA that they could help out if they could partner with the town on this. So that's just about where we're at right now.
Do you have anything, Dad? Mr. Tealsdale?
Yes. Thanks. I just wrote down a couple things, in no specific order. I'm not sure if you said it, Janice, but the idea, I think the way you explained to me, was that the Friends of Stoughton Center, I got the name correct, right? And the, the bank there that donated money, they would donate that to the town, and then we would procure the services from our standpoint, correct? So it would be in a gift account that we could pull funds from?
So let's just say if this did happen, Janice and I met with Town Council, just asked them, if this did happen, what would happen is the money that Pam got from the banks would go to the Friends of Stoughton Center, and they would then procure their own street poles. And then the town side would then procure X amount of street poles to keep it separate.
Okay. Sorry, Matt, I can't hear you too well. Can you speak up just a little bit?
Yep. So Janice and I met with Town Council and asked them how this would work out. And for instance, let's just say this did happen. The money that Pam got from the banks would go to the Friends of Stoughton Center. And let's just say they procure 20 poles. So there'd be their 20 poles. And then the town would then procure 10 poles, let's say. So the town poles and the Friends of Stoughton Center poles would be different, if that makes sense, to keep the money different. That's how that would work out.
Okay, so, all right. Was there a reason why we could not get the money gifted to the town and use, use that money? Or was it that just a recommended approach from council?
No, it was just a recommended approach from council.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then the second point I have, just speaking of DPW, in future years, they're willing to put the lights up and down. They can do that. They're willing to do it. They said they have the staff to do that. That's just a point to add. We don't have the lights right now. There might be a good, if we don't have a plan to use the $8,300 right now, that's a point, right? Because you can't just stop planting flowers in random spots. Where is the gateway? We have to define where that is and hire a landscape architect to, to plant plants, right? You're not going to just stop planting plants everywhere. So, and the fact that it's in Matt's budget, to me, seems strange as it is. Why is, why are we, why is a planting thing in the Recreation Department budget? It just seems like a strange spot for it to me. Why wouldn't Matt be in charge of deciding where the plants go in town? You know, so to me, that's, that needs to be clarified in this, this budget season.
That was the decision of the town manager, though.
Yeah. Well, I'm just, I'm just saying, I mean, now I'm the town manager. I'm looking at it. I'm saying that's a strange spot for it.
Yeah.
I mean, I mean, so I'm looking at it, and it's just, it's just odd. I mean, I think.
Yeah, it is.
Disagree if, tell me if, if you disagree with me. But I just think it's a strange spot for it. And then the other point here is, maybe it's a good compromise this year is to do a trial run. If we buy these lights, right? Wouldn't it be nice to see what they look like first up? Okay, we're going to get the garland. We're going to have 30 something lights with the garland on it, with the bow. You know, and we have a trial run. And now we know what to buy for the following years instead of just buying some stuff and saying, "You know what? Actually, I don't really like the look, the way that looked. Man, we wasted some money. We might want to think about a different plan for next year." So to me, maybe it's a good idea as a compromise for this year to do a trial run with the idea in future years that the DPW will, will buy the lights, and then they'll, they'll put them up and down. Just a thought.
So then what are our options about the 8,300? So we're saying this specific 8,300 is earmarked for, and let's call it landscaping. Landscaping. And that is plants and the flowers. Is there another pool of funds that we could use for the purpose of the lights so we won't have this conflict?
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. McCrisky?
I guess, listening to this information, if we were doing something like this, and because I'll stand by the commitment because I know and I see these people that are in Stoughton Center every year doing all these planter boxes over at their own expenses, which they should not be. If they're giving themselves, of their time to the town, the least we can do is provide them with the, the products to go in. If we were purchasing lights and we want to give it a trial, and it's not being, the money is not going to be, you know, we control it. We purchased lights that we would own because $16,000 a year is a lot of money, you know, for rental. You know, I would rather. And then I know that, you know, if I'm not mistaken, the Redevelopment Authority has already voted to support some funds. So that money's there as well. And if, if they are there, you know, and we're purchasing the lights for us to do, you know, this and keep them, I'm, I'll compromise because at least we can still meet the needs of the people that, that are out there doing the work. You know, that are paying their own money or growing their own flowers and bringing them here and making a difference. You know, and we should be able to offset that so they're not putting as much out of their own pocket. And in that, okay, I would compromise. I had a concern that we were giving the money to a nonprofit, you know, because I had heard that with the, one of the earlier presentations. So I, I would be open to that as a, as a compromise, that we're not wiping out the bank account that we, the reason we put it in for. And whether the town manager, I, I thought it was an odd thing too, but that's where she decided she wanted it. And it was, we just dealt with it. So, you know, I, I would support if we want to do that, a compromise, so. And that's it. I'm done.
Mr. Carrara, and then Mr. Zemanian, and then Mr. Vetresco. Okay.
Well, one thing you're taught when you're campaigning, you take things called in-kind donations so you don't have to put it into a town budget. If people are going to donate to you and they give you a set dollar, then you have them purchase that product, purchase that tool, purchase whatever's going to be done, and it's in-kind. And it doesn't have to go through town hall, doesn't have to go into a budget. It's an in-kind donor. It's, it's so that money doesn't get misplaced or misused. If they're going to put 10 poles up for you, you get them to pay for 10 poles, and they pay the person straight. It takes you out of the pie, and that's how it's done. You don't need a revolving account. You don't need to account for anything. They take the write-off. We get the They take the write-off, we get the service. That's how it works, if you're going to go that route.
Mr. Zemanian, please step forward, state your name and precinct, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mark Zemanian, I'm the Chair of the Stoughton Redevelopment Authority. We have a grant system that the Redevelopment Authority offers nonprofits on an annual basis. This application was brought to us. They asked us for $4,000, which was the entirety of our annual grant. I want to thank all of you for the conversation you've had tonight. And I agree with a great number of things that have been said. One of the things that the Redevelopment Authority had concerns about was this renting of lights was not sustainable. However, as Mark Tisdale, our town manager, said tonight, we liked the idea of this being a trial run. We made it clear that this couldn't go year to year. So I'm actually in favor of what Mr. Tisdale has offered as a compromise. I do want to make note, though, that our $4,000 was a matching grant because the town was in. And we saw this, so the Redevelopment Authority loves to see private-public partnerships. We had some private donations come in from some certain banks in our town, which is a great thing. And the Redevelopment Authority saw that the town, well, we were told that there was $8,000 from the town in this. So we felt that putting our grant money into this this year to top this off or finish it would be a good idea. If a compromise can be come to, I think we'll continue to have our money in that pot. However, your decision tonight is going to affect at least the discussion at the Redevelopment Authority, as far as whether or not we can continue to give those $4,000. There's a clear need for this, and over the years, I've seen the tremendous effort put in by the Friends of Stoughton Center. They've put up battery-powered lights, they've spent a lot of energy, time, and money on stuff that just wasn't going to work. It's not fair to them, it's not fair to the volunteers, which, at least from our perspective, was one of the main reasons we decided that, at least this year, let's get this off the ground, and then see if we can get this into a budget for the town. It's really, if you look at it, an inconsequential number on $116 million budget, we're talking about, you know, a few dollars in the grand scheme of things, less than 1%. However, I do respect the concerns that some of the Select Board members had tonight, and I think they were good concerns, and we shared them. You're right, this isn't sustainable. However, if you choose to move forward with this this year on a trial basis, we would still like to continue to contribute to that. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Zemanian. Mr. Vintresco, and then I just want to-
Thank you, Madam Chair. Peter Vintresco, Precinct Gate, can you hear me?
I'm trying to turn it off, please, sorry.
Huh? Hear me? Hear me? Yeah, okay, thank you. Peter Vintresco, Precinct Gate. I'm going, I'm going to go back 30 years, and I said this the first time on the Dick Murphy Show, "Welcome to my hometown, Scroogeville, USA, Stoughton, Massachusetts", because we were the only town that had no lights. And I've said it for the last two years on my show, and when I say it, I follow it up with the videos, because I went to Norwood, I went to Sharon, I went to Canton, I went to Eastern, all these towns are well-lit. Ours looks like some coalmine town down in Pennsylvania. It's awful. And then last year, they had a few lights wrapped around the poles in the square, but the little miniature lights, it just didn't do anything. But I noticed all these places that I went to, and other places, like even if you go up north or something, the lights are always white lights. Not white, the clear lights, so it really brightens everything up. But the one thing all these towns do that we don't do, Sharon, three quarters way up the pole, has an outlet. So they hang their wreaths with the lights, and they plug it in. Canton, when they did the downtown 15, 20 years ago, every tree they planted, they got an outlet. So they don't have to start trying to run wires here and there, talk everything up. And Eastern's the same way. So, done the downtown over half a dozen times, where we never planned on lights, and I mentioned that before when I do the downtown areas, but apparently, it hasn't been done. So I agree with Mr. Carrara, well, before, I'm jumping ahead. About 20 years ago, Stoughton was not going to have a holiday parade because the business, what do they call them, the Chamber of Commerce, was running the parade every year, and this year, they decided not to do it. So at the last minute, I discussed it on the Dick Murphy Show, and I went home, and I says, "The only way to pull this off with the short time we have is Mr. McCrisky." So I went and told him, you know, "We're not going to be a parade, blah, blah, and this and that." So not until we had the parade, him and I went in the square and hooked up lights, before any citizens were doing this. But up until that time, the town between, I think the Fight Department was doing a lot of it, going around with their bucket truck, putting the trees up. Then all of a sudden, they didn't do it anymore, and we didn't have any lights. Now, I'm against spending all this money at one time to put lights up and then with garland on it, because I don't think it's going to look that good. If it did, I think a lot of these other towns would have done that, rather than just have the clear lights. So I think you're going to stick with the clear lights. And we're mixing two things here, beautification with trees and shrubs and Christmas lights. How much actually is these Christmas lights going to cost? I'm asking you people.
For the, depending on how many poles you want, it's green garland, white lights, and a 36-inch red bow is $475 per pole.
$435 a pole? And that's every year?
You're paying for a service, they check the lights. If they're out, they come right out, and they do, they actually do come out right out and fix them. And they put them up, and they take them down, they store them. It's hard to get lights, I just have to let you know. When Matt and I were doing the trees and just supply and demand, we had to scout out several Home Depots to get enough lights just for those trees, so there are other factors. I had had a little more of a talk that I had wanted to give, because my thing that I wanted to say is, I think Stoughton doesn't have a plan. And whether this is the plan or not, I feel like Stoughton needs to find out, is this going to be a nonprofit kind of thing, where we take up collections every year and we do fundraising? Could be possible, maybe the town doesn't want to be involved in it, and maybe it's just going to be left to the Friends of Stoughton and the Beautification Committee. We had an ad ready to go, until we found out that there was questions on this funding. And we had an ad ready to go, to see if people wanted to contribute to this project. But if the town wants to support this, then I think it should be in the budget, at least for a certain minimum, and then see if we want to add on to it with contributions. There's all different kinds of ways we can do this.
Yeah, Ms. Bruce, I think we have a silver lining. I think we have an answer, at least a short term. And I'll turn it over to Mr. McCrisky.
Wait a minute, I'm still, I'm still here.
Oh, I thought you were just trying to get more itemized list, but we have an answer.
All right, so all I'm going to say is, I'm against this plan, putting outsiders, contractors in here to do this, because it's too much money. And the outside lights, for 20 years, I did these big maple trees in my house, the same string of lights kept. All you do, you replace a bulb once, here and there, every year, but they last forever. Now, I'm going along with Mr. Carrara. It's better and cheaper for us to let either the Fight Department or the Highway Department, they both got boom trucks, to put the lights up, and like I say, for $4,000, we can light up the square from one end to the other and beyond. So thank you very much for your time.
Okay. Back to that silver lining? Mr. McCrisky?
But it was still on, I apologize. I don't know where the information come, I got a text from a Stoughton person, businessman, that said if the town were willing to do the compromise, that he would donate $2,000. So that $4,000, if we approved it, would go to $6,000. So I think that's pretty cool. And, but again, I don't want to rent $475 to rent a wreath. I would imagine, we can, you know, in downtown decorations, I still get their catalogs every year. You know, granted, yes, supply and demand, without a doubt, you know, is an issue, no matter what we do. But again, you know, I think if we can compromise this, because then we're still meeting some of the needs of the people that are volunteering, you know, in the spring, and spending their own money, and, you know, renting it, again, they'll look nice, but then if we do $16,000, we're nowhere next year. If we buy, you know, I like that idea. You know, the fact that if we're doing that, and we make the purchase, and we buy from a vendor, and the town pays the bill, we don't have to worry about the issue of a nonprofit. Let the nonprofit go to town, raise as much money as you can. I know that you've been successful in that as well, and that's great. That's what we need, is the public-private partnerships like Mark had mentioned. So I'm okay, and that, you know, that $4,000, if we split that and allow them to use $4,000 of the eight, it went to six. So, and I thank him, so.
Well, thank you, we're going to take him up on that offer, I do believe, if the board agrees. But Mr. Stagnone, and this is the, we respect that, you know, time is of the essence, but we do want to hear what you have to say, and then we need to move on to our next agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. John Stagnone, Friends of the Stoughton Center. And this is exactly what it is, this is a private-public partnership. And as Janice had alluded to, is the previous town manager was on board with this and has kind of approved it, and this is how we got down this path in the first place, is doing the private partnerships and things. And we do, like I said, you know, we reached out to the SRA, other businesses in town have, you know, willing to donate, and there's, you know, a developer in town who kind of was involved in this as well, and actually was, you know, volunteered to pay for the, putting the electricity up on the, all the poles. And then we found out from the DPW director that the DPW could actually do that themselves, and therefore, we saved the cost, and so he's going to donate towards the lights as well. So we have a really good thing going, the Friends of Stoughton Center. We recognize this in this, and again, as Janice said, this is a trial. One of the first things we're going to be doing after the first of the year, if this is a success, that we will be talking about probably purchasing, because, you know, we agree that, you know, this is not sustainable at, you know, this type of costs or whatever. And now that we, and we just recently found out the DPW is willing and able to actually put up the lights and take them down, that changes things as well, which we didn't have that commitment previously, as all these discussions were going on. So a lot of things have changed in the last, you know, recently. And, you know, so like I said, this is a great private-public partnership, and there's no one individual or committee trying to take town money or whatever. We're all just working together to make the downtown look good during the holiday season, and bring some spirit to the town. Thank you very much.
Is there any further discussion on this?
I'm ready to make a motion.
I will accept a motion.
Madam Chair? Make a motion that the Stoughton Select Board allow the use of $4,000 out of the beautification line item of the Recreation Department to be used for holiday lighting.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Madam Chair?
And I vote aye as well. Thank you very much, and thank you.
Madam Chair? It's now 10 o'clock. Our standing rules are that the, our meetings would end at 10 o'clock. I think there's a number of items we still have to address.
And do we have to, because I need to wake up again very early tomorrow? We do have somebody here for disability commission, it wouldn't be fair.
Yes, we have someone here for disability, they've been waiting a very long time.
If we could do that, and then, because we are, and I've got a 3:30 start, Madam Chair, in the morning.
So I'll accept a motion to take item number 10, Disability Commission, and then, call it adjourned.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. I invite the Disability Commission representatives to step forward, state your name and precinct, and the issue at hand. So it's a two-part issue that we're trying to address. Please state your name and precinct, and welcome.
So I'm Charlotte Mullin, I'm Chair of the Disabilities Commission, I'm in Precinct 2. And with me are four other committee members, one is joining us virtually.
You said someone is joining virtually?
Yes.
Okay.
Hi, yes, I'm here.
Well, hello there, hi.
I believe I am Precinct 6.
Well, hello there, Precinct 6.
And I'm Christiana Odunze, I'm Precinct 3.
Hello.
And Mayor of Precinct 5.
Hello.
Mike Hardman, Precinct 8.
Well, hello.
All right. And where this is a joint meeting, do we need to open it as a joint meeting?
Yes, please. Did we, we posted as a joint meeting?
Yeah.
Yes, we did.
All in favor?
Aye.
And Allison, as well?
Aye.
Great. All right.
All right, great, thank you very much. We wanted to just take a brief moment to update you on where the Disabilities Commission has been moving. We first started meeting after a long hiatus of this commission in January of last year, 2021. And since that time, we have accomplished a number of things. We initially started by attempting to survey residents of the town to determine not only what disabilities are represented in our town, but at what numbers. Unfortunately, the survey was, respondents was limited, because our only avenue of advertising it was through the various Stoughton news, Stoughton enthusiast Facebook groups. We have developed an extensive list of resources for individuals with various disabilities, which is now on our webpage on the Stoughton website. We have now created our own Disabilities, Stoughton Disabilities Commission Facebook page, and we are adding members to that with some regularity. We have created a brochure about the Stoughton Disabilities Commission that has now been translated into Portuguese, and will be ready for distribution at Stoughton Townwide Events. We have met with a former town manager, we have met with the Senior Center Director, and we've met with the Community Preservation Commission to talk about how the Disabilities Commission can interact with those various groups and work with them. We worked with Stoughton Media Access when town meeting was remote to provide captioning for those folks who were attempting to listen to town meeting from home. We have initiated some discussions with Senator Timolty's office, the RIDE, which is the Handicapped Accessible Transportation for Individuals to Medical Appointments, currently only serves a very small slice of Stoughton up on the Canton-Sharon border, and does not cover the entire town. So folks with disabilities who need to travel to medical appointments in the city of Boston are limited in having to pay for transportation options, or find a friend, or someone who's willing to take them. The van from the Brockton area transit will only take folks to Boston on Wednesdays, which is not particularly convenient if your care provider does not see patients on a Wednesday. We have also had preliminary discussions with both the CPC and other folks about looking to make the Historical Society Building, the Lucius Clapp Building, handicap accessible, which has been a longstanding discussion in town. We are working to replace the assistive listening device in this room, which is very, very old, and used to have several units available for folks, and now only has two working units. And we're also working to create some programming on SMAC to highlight some of the services that are available to folks with various disabilities. So currently, there is a fund earmarked for this commission as regulated by state law, and the funds in that account come from- and the funds in that account come from the fines that are assessed for folks illegally using handicap parking spaces. There's approximately $7,000 in that account. The use of those funds is strictly restricted to things that will serve individuals with disabilities. So we have talked to Mr. Rowe on a couple of occasions to see if we could use some of those funds for different things, and both his assessment and that of the Department of Revenue is that, no, we could not use them for things such as advertising our survey, other services that we're able to provide. So with that, and with the thought that not everyone in the town has access to a computer, not everybody subscribes to Facebook and things of that sort, not everybody will necessarily check a website for information. Stoughton no longer has its own individual newspaper as a way to get out information. We're limited to looking to place advertisements and information in, for example, the Suburban Shopper, which goes free to every home in town. We also need to look at printing our brochures so that it's available to disseminate at townwide events, and then other things that may come up over the course of the year. And so that's why we are requesting a budget item of $2,500 to cover some of those expenses for advertising and printing and things of that sort.
Thank you very much. Before I defer to my fellow board members, I have a question for Mr. Rowe, Bill Rowe. So for this, um, this fund called Commission on Disability Parking Fines, this is the fund that if you illegally park in a handicap parking space, those fees go to that fund. What is the balance? And what is the restriction on that fund? Restriction of use?
Unfortunately, Madam Chair, I'm having trouble connecting to the network, but the, we looked at it today, and it was around $17,000 in that fund. And it's general, it's, um, the purposes of use are pretty generic. It's to benefit the resident, benefit residents of the town with disabilities. So we've, in the past, we bought a van with that money, and we pulled, pulled some money together out of that parking fines account, and there was some other money as well, and we, with Council on Aging, bought a van. We really haven't spent a heck of a lot of money out of that in quite a while. We've, the, the commission was pretty much inactive until, until Mrs. Mullin, you know, set it up at the beginning of 2021. So now, I can see that now we have, it's pretty vibrant, we have regular members. So, you know, they'll, they'll be probably wanting, you know, have some ideas of how it's to be spent. But there's, there was a restriction on the advertising, and as Mrs. Mullin said, we had, we had a problem because we were trying to persuade legislator, you know, legislator to, legislators to extend the MBTE, MBTEs, the RIDE, make it, make it more, more accessible, more convenient, more frequent rides. That was my understanding. So, so something like that would, would be outside the scope of what it could be used for, but to benefit, direct, direct benefit to residents with disabilities, you know, that fund could be used for any of that.
So Mr. Rowe, the process for dispersment of that fund, so that's the Commission on Disability Parking Fines, would it be the per usual, any, uh, payment process? It would go through Mr. Tisdale as town manager? So they would make the request, he would approve it, and then?
Yes. Yeah, usually the commission would take a vote and then make a request to the town manager, and the town manager would okay it. I haven't seen the statute in a while, but I believe that's, from memory, I believe that's how it was supposed to go.
Okay. Thank you very much. And then the, so that's the process for, we're talking right now, a $17,000 balance in the Commission on Disability Parking Fines. There's another request you have, and for that, I would like to ask, what is the, what does the Historical Commission do? How are they set up for funding? Because I would think that Disability Commission would somehow mirror the Historical Commission. Do they have another, a line item in the budget?
Yeah, I believe in the financial system, we already have a department set up for Disabilities Commission. It's just never been funded. Historical Commission, as you know, that's part of the, the general fund budget as well. They have an annual budget of $800.
Okay.
You know, I would see no problem if setting up a separate department, if the board wanted to, you know, decide on funding them out.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rowe, for that context. And now I open it up to my fellow board members, if you have any questions. Yes, Mr. Gito, I recognize Mr. Gito.
Ms. Mullin, what, what do you plan to advertise?
So for example?
I mean, the reason I'm asking the question is, it's good to put an ad in, but what is the benefit to the people who see that ad?
Sure, sure. So initially, the advertisement that Mr. Rowe was talking about was that we had hoped to publicize the issue that the ride does not service all of the town of Stoughton. And so it was the recommendation from Senator Timolte's office that a letter-writing campaign take the first step in hopefully helping with that. The T certainly has its own issues at this point, but, but that was where it was determined that it was perhaps?
I'm going to interrupt you. A letter-writing campaign to have the ride encompass the entire town?
Encompass the entire town of Stoughton?
Thank you.
To handle all, help all of the residents. So, but it was, Mr. Rowe reached out to the Department of Revenue for clarification on that, and they felt that it was more of a political effort, if you will. So our other thoughts are things like, for instance, the Department of Transportation or the Department of Motor Vehicles will, has a one-page summary of the proper use and misuse of a handicap placard. Who can park in a handicap space and when? So it'd be nice to be able to publish that in some form, so that perhaps people who are maybe not using a handicap space appropriately know what the actual rules and regulations are in the state of Massachusetts. There is also a way for residents in a town that has enhanced 911 service to be able to have their particular situation included in the 911 system. So when a resident of that home calls, it will pop up on the dispatcher's screen that that person is wheelchair-bound, is deaf, is blind, is whatever the situation is, so that the dispatcher and the responding officers can handle it appropriately. So again, getting that information out to the residents so that they know how to apply for that. So that's our thought in relation to advertising, is public information.
How many people have you determined?
Well, and that's been part of our problem. So we did issue?
Where are you right now?
We did issue the survey approximately nine months ago, I believe, and we only got 15 respondents. And again, we were restricted to publicizing it on Facebook. And not everybody's on Facebook, has computers, et cetera, et cetera. So if we had had a better way to alert the community that, yes, we are doing this, my thought is that we would have gotten plenty more respondents. Because disabilities includes not only folks that you would think of as somebody who requires the use of a wheelchair or what have you. Many of the senior citizens would certainly qualify for a variety of services, many of the veterans as well.
You probably have statistics on that for Massachusetts. I mean, someone must have. Statistics as to how many people probably out of a population of 100,000 are handicapped?
You know, I'm sure there are general statistics.
So I mean, the reason I'm asking that question is if you knew that, you would have some sense of how far you had to go in terms of how many more people you might be able to, you know?
Right.
You're not going to get just 16 if you work really hard. You're probably going to get 120 or some other number. I don't know what the number is. But it would be helpful to, to have a sense of how that, that works. And maybe there are things that you probably are starting to talk with or have talked with the town about what we need to do on our website or other ways of contacting these people. Because, I mean, all the things that you're talking about are things that are very important. Thank you. So I mean, if you can tell me anymore, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Gito. Does anyone else have any questions? So what we're talking about now is developing, developing a new?
Somebody, somebody want to speak here?
Oh, I'm sorry, sir. I couldn't even see you.
That's right. Yeah, I know, I was trying, that was.
Please approach the microphone and state your name and precinct, please.
Mark Stark, Precinct 4. One of the things with the advertising and stuff like that, which Mr. Gito made me think of, and then you said the vets, I know that there was the coffee with vets a couple times, because I never knew that there was a Disabilities Commission, or anything like that, in the town. So if you did put an advertisement in, or advertisement somewhere, you might want to have it so it's, you know, coffee with the Disabilities Commission, you know, once a month or something, or once a quarter, or once a year, whatever, just so people can see you guys come in, talk. You can already have your brochures for people, yada, yada, whatever, stuff like that. I think that might be helpful. And I'm sure the disabilities is not, I know a lot of the stuff has been discussed more towards the elderly, but this is all the way down to children. So, you know, even if you were to hook up with the schools, you can find out who, maybe not find out who, but be able to get some of your advertisement out, your pamphlets out to the school systems, because that will go home to most of the families and stuff like that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you so much. So for that budget line item, the commission?
I'm sorry, I have a couple of questions as well. Apologies.
Okay. Really quick, so you were referring to fiscal year '24, so not this current budget, but this upcoming budget that we're going to work on, right?
Yes.
Okay, right. Vice Chair Cavy?
Thank you very much. So I appreciate the problem you've discovered, right? You do have some money available to do some programming. It doesn't allow you to do any outreach, though. It doesn't allow you to just communicate, honestly, with people who could benefit from, from services. That can be very expensive, that kind of communication. $2,500 seems to me very modest. Do you feel like that, that is, I have two questions. One is, are you sure that's enough? And, you know, not to say like, you know, we have an endless budget, but that, I don't know how far you could get on $2,500 for a year.
Again, I, you know, I kind of looked at it, just looking at what the Suburban Shopper charges.
Yeah.
You know, if we were to do full-page ads, we could get close to about six ads a year. Half-page ads, we could do as many as 13. So, you know, again, I don't think, where we're kind of starting the whole process of reinvigorating this commission?
Yeah.
I don't think we have a clear sense of how much we could do. We know that we can do more than what we're doing at the current time. So, you know, that seemed like a modest place to start, and then if we find that there is a greater need, then to come back and meet with you folks and discuss for the following fiscal year.
This is one other question. This is, if you have an answer, I'd be amazed, but at the same time, I am curious to know, and so I'll ask. You know, we have about 29,000 people living in Stoughton. Do you have any statistics about the number of people within the town who suffer disabilities?
No, no. And I had reached out to the town clerk's office to see if we could include a question on the next town census, and apparently we can't because that is considered private, confidential information. So even just asking a generalized question wouldn't be acceptable, so.
So Cavy, in general, one out of four people in America suffer from disability of some form. I mean, that's, that's a wide-ranging answer to your question, but you can, you can simplify it down to whether it would be in the town.
Sure.
If you look at the town population at 10,000, you probably look at 2,000.
Okay, so it's, it would be within?
If you look at, like, it's one out of four Americans have disabilities.
One out of four?
Some sort, yeah, that qualify for it. So if you look at a town of 10,000 people, you'd probably say 2,000 would have some form of disability, whether it's mental, physical, you know, whether in a wheelchair or not, whatever kind of, whatever their disability qualifications would be one out of three, one out of four. It's higher in Massachusetts on average.
So that's, you know, it just, I know it's a very just broad statistic. If we're kind of in line with that, that's 7,300 people who need services, of which, you know, that's basically $1 for every dollar you have in your account, right? It's certainly not enough, but I still feel like whatever we can do to communicate with, you know, our neighbors, to let them know that these things are available, it's really coming upon us to do that. So I support your mission, and if anything, I would, you know, I would like to see you guys have more available, even in the first year. I think, I think $2,500 is not going to get you very far, especially as you do programming. So to the extent that the board would be willing to entertain it, I'd like to see, you know, a $5,000 budget line within that, within that annual town meeting to support advertising for, or actually just for any purpose for this, this committee. Thank you. Yeah, I'll make a motion to, to?
Can we wait on that?
One second. I see Ms. Walsh. Please approach the microphone and state your name and precinct. And then I think Mr. McCrisky wanted to have a comment before we make that motion.
I've been coming up too often, I think. I didn't realize the number was as high as a previous speaker mentioned. I know it was 10 to 15%. And obviously, some of, some handicaps or disabilities, like wearing glasses or hearing aids are no big thing. The biggest, I think, disability we see in Stoughton is mobility, and the ability, as the previous speakers have said, the ability to get around. But one thing that you folks could do for this group is offer them a mailing in the next water bill. Depending on how extensive their printing is, we just got a water bill with the new roots for our, or the new days for our trash collection. But in the past, the Beautification Committee was allowed to ask for funds. They're not even asking for funds. They just want to get information out. So depending on how extensive your brochure is or whatever, it, it could go free of charge into the next mailing of our trash slash sewers slash water bills.
That's interesting, Mr. McCrisky. Did you?
Yeah, my question, and I agree with Mr. Cavy. Mr. Rowe, did you say we had $17,000 or $7,000?
Seventeen.
$17,000.
One seventeen, seventeen thousand.
And that, and that money, any part, portion of that money can be moved into a line item by our board for this commission?
No, it couldn't be used to fund the No, it couldn't be used to fund the, you know, the overall general fund operating budget, but it could be used to, that would, the $2,500 or $5,000, whatever you decide, would have to come from the normal, you know, general fund revenues.
Okay, and where?
The Disabilities Park Fines, that sits outside, it's almost, I don't want to say a revolving fund, but it's almost like a revolving fund, they can spend from that without appropriation.
Okay, all right, because I was going to say, seven thousand? No, I mean, it, you know, it'll give them a year, I mean, there's printing cost, yes, we can do the mailing, that's, it's an idea, we can do the mailing in the water bill, but I had the hardest time getting a couple things into it because we heard, well, you can't do that, you can only do this, and it, and it's just like, you know, I think it was a who you are at the time, you know, which I don't go for. But I believe that, you know, making access, utilization of our website, you know, with links, with your information, email addresses, if you don't have town email addresses, you should be offered the opportunity to get a town email address so you don't have to use your own.
We do.
Okay, so then you could use our website, reach out through that. There may be ways for you to get email blasts from other agencies. You know, I know there's a lot of HIPAA rules and things like that, where you can't share certain information, but there's also other groups that have mailing lists that you could, you know, use to just fire off some emails to people through the Council on Aging, and as well is use the Council on Aging website as well, because, let's face it, there's going to be, right there, there's, there's people there that can't get out of their home to even go to the Council on Aging, you know, so. So I think that whatever way we can do, and I guess, you know, putting that, I would put a dollar amount of support, you know, up to 7,000 of that, which will give you something that you can do the ads, you've got some resource outreach materials, you know, if you wanted to do a printing, you know, something like that, reach out. Another resource on printing, which is cheaper, is you may want to reach out to MASCOR, M-A-S-S-C-O-R. That is an arm of the Norfolk County prison system, and inmates have a printing shop. And they charge, you know, you know, nickels on the dollar, and the savings go to municipal agencies. And they do reach out to businesses as well, so they, they make t-shirts, they do printing, they make envelopes, you know, they print town seals on books, things like that, and you'll find, they do have a website, and last time I checked, it was under construction, but I believe it's MASCOR.gov or .org, one of them. And you'll see what they have, their printing is nickels on the dollar, you know? They got kind of a captive group, you know? But yeah, no, I think it's great, and thank you for everything you're doing. It's, it's good to see it, you know, it's getting going, let's see if we can, whatever way we can help you, so. I'll let somebody else throw a number out, and I'll support it.
So Vice Chair Cavy?
Yeah, so the motion is to provide the Disabilities Commission with a line item of $7,000 at our upcoming annual town meeting on the budget.
Second.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much for work that you're doing.
Thank you.
Oh. We need a motion to close the meeting.
And are we going to take a motion too?
Yes. Oh, you want to take a motion?
Allison?
I accept a motion to adjourn from our-
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I vote aye as well. Thank you very much, and good night, everyone, see you next time.